We're good, okay? I believe we're live, so we'll call the meeting to order on October 30th, 2025 at 3:00 PM. This is a workshop of the Board of Trustees, Apple Valley Unified School District. So with that, we call it to order with next on the agenda is roll call. Amanda Buchanan.
Here.
Maria Okpara.
Here.
Renee Longshore.
Here.
And Anita Tucker.
Here.
And Rick Rowley, I'm here as well. If we could have Anita, if you could lead us in the pledge, please, please rise, place the flag.
Hand over heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, it brings us already to item four, which is public comments. Kylie, you have some cards?
Yes, we have four.
Okay. And I'll remind everyone that we have a three-minute limit and please respect that because we have a lot to cover tonight. J.C. Scott, that's up first. And then Eva Beavers after that.
Good afternoon, President Sabers, members of Avuda, school board members, district cabinet, superintendent Nelson, members of the community and my siblings of the California School Employees Association. My name is J.C. Scott, chapter president of CSCA Chapter 820 in Apple Valley, and I stand before you today not only as a representative but the classified employees who keep this district running every single day, but as a voice for the community that deserves honesty, transparency, and responsible leadership. Today, we have before us a devastating report from the fiscal crisis and management assistance team. A report that confirms what many of us have seen and felt for a long, for far too long. Apple Valley Unified School District is at high risk for fiscal insolvency. Let that sink in, high risk for fiscal insolvency. Our district that serves over 13,000 students and employees, hundreds of hardworking, dedicated students, is teetering on the edge of financial collapse. FICMAT's findings are clear and alarming. The district has been deficit spending for multiple years. The district has used one-time funds to pay ongoing salaries and benefits with no plan to sustain those positions once the money ran out. The district's own financial reports are unclear and difficult to understand, often dumped on the board and public with little to no explanation, making it nearly impossible for the community to know how taxpayer money is being spent. Education code violations and timely submissions, disregard for direction and oversight from the county superintendent of schools, and perhaps most disturbing FICMAT found weak internal controls and no system to detect fraud. These are not minor oversights. These are failures of leadership, accountability, and stewardship. FICMAT also made it clear that the district's budget presentation lacked transparency with information often provided only at meetings, leaving both board members and the public with no real opportunity to review or question financial assumptions. This practice must end. Let's be clear, this report isn't just numbers and charts. It represents students who might lose programs, employees who might lose jobs, and a community that might lose faith in the public schools. Every custodian, parent educator, bus driver, food service worker, and office technician in this district already does more with less, including those teachers. We show up every day for our students, but we cannot fix what poor financial management has broken. So today, I'm asking on behalf of every classified school member and every taxpayer, real accountability with transparency. We ask a clear public plan for this board and administrators to end deficit spending with timeliness, actions, and accountability, full disclosure of how one-time fundings were used to cover ongoing costs and how those positions will be sustained moving forward, immediate implementation of board prevention system or fraud prevention systems, including anonymous reporting hotlines, internal audits, and stronger internal controls, meaningful public access to financial records provided in advance in plain language and not buried in technical jargon. And if it comes down to implementing cuts, the district examined the levels before the one-time funding hiring spree, returned as close as possible to the previous levels of staffing, and everyone contribute their fair share across the board, beginning with management and administrators. The day of last-minute financial presentations and half answers must end. Our students, our staff, and our community deserve the truth. We all at Apple Valley Unified want to succeed, but success cannot be built on secrecy, denial, or spin. It requires courage and the courage to face the facts, make tough decisions, and rebuild trust.
J.C., do you have a lot more to go?
Um, no, I'm almost done.
Okay, thanks.
CSEA stands ready to build towards solutions, but we are not. We will not stand quietly while the district drifts towards insolvency. It is an alarm bill, and tonight, we're here to say loud and clear, we hear it, we see it, and we will not let it be ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva? Is there Eva? Oh, Maria, I'm sorry, did you want my attention? Oh, okay, yeah, I saw it was a little bit over, it sounded like he was wrapping it up, so. Steve Cobb, you'll be up next.
Okay, so this is my first time being here, but my name is Eva Beavers, and I am a parent with children at Rancho Verde. So the reason why I am here is to figure out what's going on with the budget. I am trying to question the board in regards to fraud charges that are being held according to the report that was received. And I also want to question why the teachers are being paid in other forms in regards to the funds that are available to the school district. Just calling that into question, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you for your comments. And then Karen, you're after, Steve.
Good afternoon, I'm speaking in regards to the collective bargaining is the area of highest risk for the district, so that's where it kind of comes to. District Superintendent Nelson, board members, cabinet, colleagues, and friends, good afternoon. I rise to speak today about the conditions of the district and negotiations. I'm deeply concerned over the process of how decisions are made in regards to contracts and agreements. Over the last few months, our Vuda negotiations team has been met with delay after delay in being able to talk about Article 19, which is our pay and benefits. We were met with a timeline for getting our health and welfare benefits finalized due to the necessity of changing insurance outlets. We agreed to 90% of the coming Kaiser rate for 2425, so that when we changed, our unit members would not be leveled by new costs arising from the change. The decision to accept a lesser offer was due to the agreement that we would come back to the table after the May revise to add to our negotiated settlement. Shame on us. We trusted you. Since that time, we were told that the district was given no direction from the Board of Trustees, and therefore, we could not negotiate better benefit rates. This happened for more than one session. During that time, I was told by a few people to find the money. We believe we did, but before we had another session, the district settled with CSEA and it was accepted. I stood before the board and I talked about symbolic or substantial offers to us. The offer that was made was definitely not substantial and did not include items that were in the other bargaining units offers. The board met again last month and argued for an hour about the lack of money and were to find it, only to leave to go to another closed session at 10:30 at night. When nobody was left in the room and came back at 11:30 PM, I got a text after I'd went home and gone to bed to announce that without negotiations, an agreement was struck with management and included the same offers that CSEA received. That vote was five to zero with no board member saying no to an agreement that paid management before agreeing to pay teachers a fair and equitable wage and benefits. The argument was that we all received the same offer, and this is not true. The two settlements included a surprising 16% 30-year annual longevity payout that benefits what I'm told is a few people. For example, if someone in management were making $195,000 at 16%, it would be an annual $31,000 plus. So much for not having any money to offer. Other bargaining units have in prior years put their raises toward salaries while Avuda put some of theirs toward benefits to raise that level up. The new benefits package after increases included this. For management, the average from 2324, which was $15,000, now is an average raise of $9,720 per person, bringing their average amount to $24,720. CSEA in 2324 was $16,375 per member, raised an average of $4,216 per person. Avuda's average raise from 2425 up to now is $1,124 per person. Avuda dropped from 61 members, taking insurance down to 595 after the buyout, saving about $720,000, and that is not given to us in any of those. The call for accountability is upon us, and I'll be listening with interest to this report tonight to see recommendations for cuts or accountability. Our members are awake, aware, more resolved than ever to make lasting changes to the environment that helps us retain, attract, and retain quality teachers, counselors, and SLPs to our districts so we can provide the best for our students. It's time to prioritize our learning environments by putting our dollars and our words together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Karen Sabers is the last speaker.
Okay, before you start the timer, I need to play something on record. The FICMAT report contains inaccuracies regarding certificated salary increases. In section six, specifically 6.1, it states that the 2023-24 agreement included a 1.5% ongoing salary increase and an additional $1,250 added to every cell of the certificated salary schedule. This is incorrect. We did not receive a 1.5% ongoing increase. We only received the 1,250 per cell. This section also claims that in 2024-25, the 2024-25 agreement, a 3% ongoing salary increase and an additional 2,750 per cell. This is also inaccurate. We only received the 2,750 per cell. I am formally requesting that these inaccuracies be corrected and that the record reflect the actual agreements. Now I'll begin my speech. Good afternoon, Superintendent Nelson, board members, cabinet, and audience. My name is Karen Sabers, president of the Apple Valley Unified Teachers Association. Reading the FICMAT report was deeply disheartening. It confirms exactly what we have been raising in negoti- concerns we have been raising in negotiations and at this podium for the past nine to 10 months. On February 7th, 2025, we sat in Conference Room A and asked Mr. Scholenberg whether the district had used the one-time money, something we were all told in every governor's budget briefing never to do, to hire ongoing staff. His answer, not once but twice, was simply, Karen, we are overstaffed. We repeatedly asked this board what the district's plan was to address the problem because it was draining reserves to the point that the seniority list had to be updated. As a result, 45 to 48 certificated positions were eliminated and critical student and teaching support roles were lost. To date, there's been no resolution shared with us. The report also points out the past three years of deficit spending, which we have also stood up here and addressed with this board. The reports highlighted weaknesses in the internal controls, transparency, and financial reporting, which are too technical and often provided to the board and the public late for meaningful review. We need clear, assessable summaries that explain what's changed, why, and what it means for our students and staff. We have asked what your plan is to stop the deficit spending for more transparency, and we continue to ask for accountability. These ongoing practices combined with limited transparency in our financial reporting have put this district at high fiscal risk. This brings me to March 6th, 2025. On that day, our then-Vice President, Lead Negotiator, Leslie McNanley, and I were called into a meeting with our Superintendent, Mr. Conrad. We were told that the district would be completely revamping and restructuring its operations and that Avuda would be included in every step of the process, including a thorough review of the budget and our input along the way. It has now been eight months. We have not been included in a single conversation about this since. While I am disappointed by the findings of this report, I'm equally disappointed that only two board members submitted questions to FICMAT. Some long-serving board members continue to sit silently, avoiding hard questions that must be asked. Instead, the few board members who do ask questions are criticized for doing the job they were elected to do. When is this board going to stop rubber stamping and start leading? When will you demand change? And when will you hold those responsible accountable? You are here to do a job, not for the notoriety, but to serve the community that elected you and trusts you to protect our students, our staff, and the future of this district. Thank you for your time and solidarity, Karen Sabers.
All right, thank you for your comments. So we're going to move on now. We'll move on to item B, discussion information, FICMAT board technical assistance. So we'll call you ladies up. Appreciate your, your time.
All right.
Oh, please touch, yeah.
Thank you so much. All right. Is that good?
Is the green, is the green light on?
The light is on, all right. So good afternoon.
Mr. President, can I have a question?
Sure.
What will be the format of this technical assistance? Can we ask questions as you go?
You want to answer that, or you want me to answer that? So, so we had asked that the questions be submitted in advance, so we actually have it presented. The questions are part of the slides.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. All right, so good afternoon, trustee Superintendent Nelson, everybody else that has joined us this afternoon. We weren't expecting such a large crowd, so welcome to everybody. So let me tell you a little bit about us and what kind of got us here today. So the district invited us in to do what's called a fiscal health risk analysis. I'm going to talk about this more when we get to the presentation of the report. But we were invited in, and during that, in preparation for that, the district had to provide lots of documents to us. They did that in a very timely manner, got us all the information that we needed. We were able to review those documents. Then we came in and did a series of interviews over the course of a few days. Then we left and did the analysis and produced a draft report for the district to, to look at and then got it to final. Karen, and I apologize, I forget your last name, but I would love for you to submit that through the district to us. We want to make sure that our report is as accurate as possible. We were going off a maybe 1,200 disclosure, and that was the way that we interpreted it. So, so make sure that you submit that information to the district and, and we'll go about making that correct, okay? So we want to make sure that it's, we always want our reports to be as accurate as possible. So during the course of our interviews, we had, we could tell that there was lots of questions, lots of questions from, from the five different board members. They had some great questions, but we, we knew that there needed to be some further understanding. So we were asked if we would possibly come in and do a board study session, and we said, sure, get us the questions in advance because we don't know your district intimately, right? So we'd like the questions in advance so we could go back into the documents. I will say this about the FHRA, so I'm going to refer to the fiscal health risk analysis as an FHRA. So the FHRA looks at 20 different areas that over the 30-plus years we've been in existence, those are the 20 areas, and the questions under each area are the things that have led a district down the path to insolvency. So I'll talk more about that tool as we get closer. But in terms of our interviews, in terms of the documents that we requested that the district have on hand, we do not go deep, we go deep enough to answer those questions. So I just want to kind of set the stage for that, all right? Because some of the questions that the board members asked are something that we're going to try our best to answer your questions. We may not be able to answer every single one, but we went back into the documents, and if we could decipher it, we're going to, we're going to provide you our interpretation. In addition to that, we're also going to talk to you about what we've seen as best practice throughout the state, working with other districts, okay? So I just kind of wanted to set the stage on that. All right, so this first one, before we get into the questions, we thought we would just give just a little bit of background information that we think will kind of lay a foundation for the questions as we move into those. So this, this picture I love because it walks you through the budget cycle from beginning to end. So it starts in January when the governor, you know, presents their budget, anticipating what they think is going to be in there. It takes you through, you know, yes, if you were going to need to, oh, and that also includes us when the district would do your enrollment projections so that you would have an idea of, of what your finances looked for the following year. If you needed to do any kind of layoffs, that obviously has some March implications. It walks you through the entire process, but it's a nice little pictorial that, that shows from beginning to end. And you will see it goes from January all the way through to a year and a half for an entire cycle to get to the estimated actuals. So it just kind of walks you through that timeline. So I thought that was a very nice representation to tell you all the different bits and pieces of the budget cycle. This one, I think, is really good for board members. This is one that we provide many times when people are becoming a board member. For the very first time, they'll reach out to our organization. They reach out to my boss, Mike Fine, an awful lot and say, hey, what do I need to know? Because I'm going to be sitting on a board, what do I need to know in terms of looking at finances? And so he always shares this. I think it's really good because it talks about the what going down. If you looked in the dark blue is really the governance team, right? So the board is the one who sets the, the vision, the beliefs, the priorities, the policies. So they're pushing down the what to the district. And then on the how is administration, teacher, staff. You're taking that, and it's all centered around those strategic goals, success indicators, resource allocations. So it, that's at the core of what you're doing. And then it's up to the district to take that and come up with the strategies, the tactics, the technique, the how in terms of that. So it kind of outlines the, the different roles that each plays in terms of looking at, at district finances. And so I'm going to turn it over to my colleague. I forgot to introduce ourselves. I am so sorry, just jumped right in. My name is Shailene Hart. This is my colleague Jennifer Noga, and so we both represent FICMAT, and so I'm going to turn it over to her at this point. Okay, I don't have a loud voice, and so I'm going to try and stand by the microphone, but I tend to wander off. So I will try and speak into this as, as easy as possible. So again, with the, some of the questions that we received and a lot of the questions that we heard in the interviews and even speaking today, the SACS reports, which the school districts are required to submit their financial reports in, we work in them every day. They're very easily and understandable to us. For the outside world, they're not easily and understandable. I mean, it's 190-plus pages. So my short presentation is just kind of walking through the budget. So quick foremost, right, a budget is, it, it's like Shailene's slide. It's your plan, your priorities as an organization. Yes, the LCFF dollars have to align to your LCAP, but there's many dollars in your budget that have to align to strategic plans. So it's not just the LCAP, but a lot of the funding that you receive and those plans come forward. So everybody should know how some of their dollars are being spent because the plans are brought forward and they're shared, right? The budget also represents how much money you're receiving, how much, how much you're spending, the expenditures that are going out, transfers that might be going out, and then how do you think you're going to finish the fiscal year? So again, to that slide that Shailene brought with all the budget reporting, the budget cycle, right? The year and a half. Throughout the fiscal year, there are so many changes that are happening at the state level, economic as a whole in the world, right? We have a lot going on in our world. The school district itself, we put our budgets together in May. We're trying to figure out how many students are going to show up, and are they actually going to come to class every day? Are they not going to come to class every day? So what we'll use, and I say we in looking at the district, right? Oops, I'm hitting the button. Sorry. All right. We use trends to build our budgets. It's the best, it's the best history that we can go on. And so we use trends with those, with assumptions to build those budgets. Again, we work in it, we understand it, and some of that information isn't as transparent. But I think there's, there's, this reporting hopefully will help get you guys there. But looking for opportunities with your restricted and your unrestricted dollars, how to maximize the use of all of the revenues that you're receiving. And then, as you talked about already with the comments, the one-time funds, right? It's said at every meeting, one-time funds should be used for one-time resources. The problem with the last five years, we've had this huge influx of COVID dollars, and it's, it's masked. Honestly, it's masked every district throughout the state's position because some of the one-time dollars were unrestricted, some of them were restricted. A lot of school districts moved staff into the restricted, but they're really going to be teachers that they have for ongoing. And so it's really been kind of a nightmare when we're working with districts that are faced with these one-time funds. Because as we know, those one-time funds are gone now, and so we are now working with in our budgets. This is our revenue, this is our expenditures, and how are we going to spend these dollars? Why do I feel like I skipped something? So I did. Okay, there we go. Sorry. Oh, my gosh, why didn't you say something to me? Okay, so again, the fundamentals of the budget is making sure that it's your operational guide for how you're going to implement programs. And then it's the communication, right? It's the tool on how you're communicating to your educational partners on how you're using those dollars and, and supporting your students within your community. Okay, more fundamentals. So again, reasonable assumptions. Those reasonable assumptions I talked about are based on trends. We get a lot of information at the governor's budget, the May revise, and then the county office sends information to your district on what they expect to see in your budget. Could be the same as the governor's budget, it might be a little bit different. Some counties take a stance that might be a little more conservative. But these are all impacts, the economic, the political, and the state budget cycle that impact the assumptions in how you're building your budgets. So your budget's going to change. Again, we build your budget in May, the district builds a budget in May, based on who knows how many students are going to show up? How many staff members do we need? How many facilities? How many facility replacements, what have you, right? Roof's that might go out. There's a lot that happens throughout the year and therefore your budget needs to change with each one of those, with each one of those things that can impact it. Does it change weekly, monthly? Yes, it should change as often as new information is brought forth to the staff. They want to make sure that that budget is updated. One of the first signs of a troubled district is they're only changing maybe at adopted budget, first interim, second interim, and then lo and behold, unaudited actuals. There's a big surprise at the end because they didn't update it between each of those budget cycles. And as you're moving through the year, your adopted budget, again, it's what we thought. But as you're moving through the year, the, the year's progressing. You know your students, you know if they're showing up for school. So you make those adjustments and so now you're going to estimate how you're going to end the year. When you have your second interim, you're three quarters of the way almost through the year. And so now that last few months, you should be estimating where do we think we're going to end the year? And again, adopted budget, May and June, you have your estimated actuals. So that's coming to the board in May and June. You're almost done with the year. So it really should mirror, this is how we think we're going to end the year. Now, there's different policies throughout the state and on districts. Some close their budget so that you can't purchase anything past April. Some districts don't. Some districts will, at second interim or even estimated actual site budgets, they'll recoup them. It's, it's whatever your policy and what the decisions of your district are driving those decisions, right? Because some of the site budgets, they think they're going to spend it, right? The budget, they have it. I've been in these positions, you think they're going to spend it, they've told you they're going to spend it, and then at year end, okay, there's a fallout of 180,000, which I know that's probably a small number of mine, or smaller, but I'm just saying, there's a small number. If you have those type of variances at the year end, you should just be able to explain them. You should be able to explain what those variances are. And then again, the budget should be balanced. And when we talk about a balanced budget, that's here's our revenues that we're anticipating, here's our expenditures. You're including the other sources because you may have transfers in and transfers out, and therefore that takes into account. But are we spending more than we're receiving? Or are we, do we have a net surplus, right? If you're spending more than you're receiving, that's when you have to start having the hard discussions. And so you want to correct those, you do not want to have that carrying forward year over year. Again, when you're developing your budget, we focus on the general fund because it's the biggest one, right? It has a lot of the, the activity that we, the operational, that's what funds the majority. But you do have other funds and so you just need to know about them, know that the other funds are out there. Governmental accounting, I'm going to try not throw out like accounting jargon. But school districts do fund accounting. So it's kind of like at home, you have one checking account, but don't you wish you could split it up into different priorities? That's how school districts, it's split up because you have different pots of money and they are restricted on what they can be spent on. So you can't actually kind of merge those pots together, they stand alone, they're separate pots. There are instances, let's say, that, I don't know, your mom loaned you money, so she's going to transfer some money into your checking account. There are instances between some of the funds where they can transfer money in between and their purpose and what they're being used for are allowed. And so you may see that between some accounts. Again, if you see it, staff will be able to explain it and so it should be explainable. Focus on using those most restricted dollars first. The restricted dollars have deadlines, they have, they have very distinct items on what they can be spent for. And so you want to make sure that you're spending those dollars first. And really see if you can maximize some of your restricted pots of money, share them together to maximize your students' needs and the programs. So again, not saying that's not being done here, but with the budget, that's the best plan for these dollars. And then again, the one-time funds, which I talked about this slide, because I was on the wrong slide. Make sure you're using the one-time funds for one-time needs. And just to stress, the one-time funds are not only just maybe revenues that you receive, but I want to stress that your reserve is considered a one-time source. So your ending fund balance is one-time in nature. So if you're deficit spending and you're dipping into your reserves, that's one-time, right? Those reserves are depleted, they're going to reduce when you're using those. So deficit spending, again, I talked about that. That's when your expenditures exceed your revenues and it has a net decrease to your fund balance. And your fund balance is, so you're required by the state to have 3%. Your board has a 5% policy, I believe, on top of that. And then it's your, it's reserves, right? If something goes wrong. And so you want to be sure that you have, if the roof needs to be replaced, if there's something catastrophic that happens, you want to make sure that the reserves are there to be able to address that. And so not necessarily building up your reserves, but planning for emergencies is always strong. A structural deficit is when you continue deficit spending year over year over year. Again, it's kind of been happening because we had a lot of one-time money. Some of the one-time money all came in at the front and then we spent it down through the years. But I believe you've been deficit spending in your general fund for the past three years. And so I did not break it down between unrestricted and restricted. But a structural deficit over time can lead to fiscal insolvency. And then again, just making a plan so that you have an exit plan for any of those one-time funds or the deficit spending. So your reserves are made up again of kind of what's left over. So you have a beginning fund. If you have a net increase, it's going to begin your beginning, build your beginning fund balance. So this is in essence, your reserves. So it's reserves and ending fund balance kind of equal, it's the same. For districts that have Fund 17, your district does not have a Fund 17, that actually is accounted for when you're looking at your budget. So if you go to another district, they have a Fund 17, Fund 17 is included. And so it takes into consideration the Fund 17 to estimate what your reserves are. Again, estimation of your ending balances are byproduct of your budgets, right? So as we're building our budget through the year, our goal when we get to that estimated actuals or second interim is how do we think we're going to finish the year? And so we don't want any surprises, right? Surprises or big variances can avoid, can create distrust or you just have surprises. And I'm not going to say it doesn't happen. The state oftentimes will approve funds and they send them to you at the end of the year. But again, it's explainable. So anytime there's a variance, which I think is kind of conversations that are going to be happening, when there's a variance between what I would use as estimated actuals and your unaudited actuals, you should be able to talk about those variances and they should be explainable. But using an adopted budget, when we didn't even know what was going to happen with our district, right? We're using assumptions, we're basing it on trends, we don't know how many kids are going to show up. Comparing an adopted budget with your unaudited actuals, I would hope to see variances, right? I mean, the likelihood that any of those are going to align is very, very unlikely. But the estimated actuals and the unaudited actuals, those two should be kind of aligned. And you really don't want to see over a 5% variance between those. And again, things happen, but just be able to explain those. This is for the unrestricted. Now I'm going to talk about the restricted. Because as I talked about earlier, the restricted fund balance, again, we have a bunch of plans that have been approved. We've been in like, what is it called, Plan? So COVID, we're in Plan Nation or whatever it is. We're having to submit plans for every single funding out there. You're going to go out and hire this, you're going to go out and plan for this, we're going to start these new programs. But the people aren't out there, right? And so you can't hire, you're having to contract out, or you aren't able to spend the dollars. And so this is a little different where I say the 5% major category variances. Because the restricted dollars are not as easy to spend and you're going to have bigger variances than that. They're just hard to spend. If you can't get the staff hired, if you can't find the contractors even to do the job, you might have bigger variances in the restricted. But again, those dollars can only be used for certain things. And so it doesn't impact things in the everyday general, unrestricted general fund, right? It can't pay for a general ed teacher. And so it's just knowing all those pots of money and what they can be used for and understanding them, right? As a team, team, right, everybody. And then the components of ending fund balance is really, it's just, I'm going to go to my sheet because I tried to explain this and what I think is, I don't know, layman terms? It's kind of like your savings account. So it's your ending fund balance, it's the reserves. And then again, we're required by the SACS accounting, SACS accounting code requirement that we have to break those down. The audit, all of it requires you to break each of those dollars down. And so these are the different categories. The non-spendable fund balance, I'll apologize, there's an error in there. The bullet for stores and inventory are two in the same. That third bullet should actually say prepaid items. So really, the non-spendables isn't necessarily cash. Yes, revolving cash is cash, but you need that set in the bank account, there's a purpose for that, right? If there's a payroll error, they need to be able to write a check to fix that. So yes, the restricted fund balance, when you look at the components of ending fund balance, is just that. It's your restricted dollar amount. And I'm going to show you the slides in a few minutes. And then committed funds requires board resolution. So it requires board action that you guys are going to commit certain dollars for a specific item. It takes board action, it doesn't happen behind the scenes, it has to be at public meeting. And so you'll see a resolution. The assigned fund balance, I think you have lottery for yours, 671,000. My guess is, you know, there's going to be a textbook adoption in the future and so you're using and assigning those lottery funds maybe for that purpose. Again, that's my assumption of your budget, I've not asked your staff, but that would be my assumption. Because you know you're going to have a textbook adoption and so you're going to set dollars aside for those purposes. I also believe your board policy for the additional 5% is under that assign. That's a conversation that happened, management, probably between the board, they're not going to be surprised. These are conversations that are happening. And then in your unassigned fund balance, you have your required 3% reserves. And then whatever's left is kind of the flexible amount that is available to kind of use, add programs, staff, all of that. Again, remember, these dollars are one-time in nature. So your reserves, once you use them, now you're going to have to build them back up. So now I'm going to attempt to go over this form. This is what everybody gets, right? I tried to use arrows. So right on the very top is your total revenues. Under that total revenues or above it is specific classifications. So you have LCFF, you have federal, you have state, and you have other. Very specific in what goes there. But when you're looking at these reports, you want to look at total revenues. So you have your unaudited actuals and you have your budget. This is the same on every report. This is going to be the same even on your interim reports. The columns are going to be different because your interim reports are just your current year. It has your adopted budget, it has some, your latest adopted budget, it has your actuals to date, and then it has where you're projected, where you think you're going to end. And that has a variance, but it still has your total revenue. Next, you have your total expenditures. So that's again, our operational budget within the general fund. How are we going to spend our dollars? It's broken down by all classifications. You have certificated, classified benefits, books and supplies, services, capital outlay. I know we have some questions about the sevens and some later in the eight thousands and I have those answered later. But this is your total expenditures to run your district. And then you have your, trying to see it, total other finances. So if you are transferring money in or out, it will be accounted for here. And if you are contributing, if the general fund is contributing to restricted programs, this is going to be accounted for here. Again, we talk about that a little later because that's one of the questions. And so I'll answer that at that time. The big picture and what you want to get out of this report is this line right here. I believe it's E, I can't see it. I think it's E. This is your net increase or decrease. So are you spending more than you're receiving? So that's your revenue minus your expenditures and your other sources. This is, this tells you, are you spending more than you're receiving or not? Are you deficit spending? And if you are, do you know why, right? Can you explain why? Here's the fund balance. And I say fund balance, comma, reserves, because that's what the section is called in the SACS report. It's your ending fund balance. So I highlighted F2, which is your ending fund balance. But the very top line is your beginning fund balance. That's going to match last year's unaudited actuals and it's carried forward. You could have some audit adjustments or some restatements. That's all done within your, within your county office oversight and your audit reports. So all of those will be called out in your audit reports. And then here's your ending fund balance. So you take that beginning fund balance, reduce it by the deficit spending, and there you have what you have available. And as I spoke about earlier, there's your components and how your district breaks down. Your, I think it was 31,211. The restricted really has one number in it, 9740, that's your restricted funds, it's that column. Everything goes in there, it's grayed out because the software doesn't allow anything else to go into those grayed out cells. The district didn't gray out the cells, the software grayed out the cells. Everything in these forms are populated throughout the financial. The components of ending fund balance here in the other assignments, there is a section where we type those in. I say we, our staff will type that in. And then it populates this section. So those are manually entered, but again, it's, it's on here. Nothing's not printed once you enter those. And then we have this section. So I have to tell you, I've been doing this for over 26 years. I've actually never had a question about this section, but we do have a question about this section. And this is where I'm going to try and not get technical because it's accounting. And so accounting, every entry that you do up here in your revenues and your expenditures and your other sources, there's two sides, right? A debit and a credit. And so there's two sides to it. So your section down here is the other side. It's really a complete recap of everything above section F. So when you look at, for example, the assets, so assets, and this is again where I'm going to throw in some accounting, assets equals liabilities plus fund equity. So those two should equal. For this report, I don't know that you can see them, but I think I have the numbers in my head. Assets equals 65 million. If you minus the liabilities, minus that outflow and minus, or in minus those two, you're going to get 31,211, which is exactly what your fund, what your fund balance is. So in essence, your assets includes, because it's 65 million, So in essence, your assets includes, because it's 65 million. It includes your reserves, it includes everything because it's at 65 million. And when you look at this report, the fund equity states that the fund equity and your F2 under the reserves should match. So this is all happening behind the scenes. As you see for the budget, it's white. They do not track this information in the adopted budget. You do not see this information at even first or second interim. Now, your district, I believe, shows it at estimated actuals. There are some counties that don't even show it at estimated actuals. And the reason for that is because it's in flux. It is 100% in flux because we haven't closed the books yet. So we're still making entries until we close the books through September. And so it's a recap. Yeah, you want to make sure that they match, which I guarantee you, they won't be able to print the report because they're going to have a TRC if it doesn't match. And so they won't get an official DAT file if there's a problem with it. And every accounting software that I know of, I'm going to tell you, LA County didn't use to do both sides for us. But every other accounting throughout the, um, every other accounting system throughout the county does both sides for you automatically. So however they set up that financial system, it tells it exactly which 9,000 account to go into. And so it's all behind the scenes. And then as you upload all of your information, it scatters it throughout this section. So I'll make sure I answer everything. Well, I get looking at it and again, trying to learn our roles or understand these budgets, I guess more is what I want to say. Assets is a big thing in accounting, right? You have fund balance, you have assets, and it's like, wait, we have all this stuff, why doesn't this make sense? Why can't I use this? Good question, it's a valid question, but just understanding how it's broken down in these SACS forms. These forms aren't friendly, there's nothing friendly about these forms, it's 190 plus pages. They have all these embedded things in there. And so it's hard to understand. And so I really respect the question because 26 years I've not had anybody look at this page. Which, I don't know, begs the question, what are they doing? So I don't know, very good question, I appreciate the question. And I'm hoping, um, that we kind of answered it, but if there's more questions. But the one thing I just want everybody to remember is that the reserves are part of the assets. It's part of that 65. Just make sure the 65 minus the liabilities and that outflow and inflow and that fund equity matches. But what you more really want to pay attention to is everything above this section. That net increase and decrease and what is our ending fund balance. I still think we can answer the questions where we asked about the reserves and assets. Because if your reserves go down, your assets are going to go down. So it's still a very valid question, right? And looking, what is happening to this? And so I, we have that answer too. So that was a lot to go over, sorry. Um, hopefully it was a little helpful. Um, and then again, just to kind of recap, the budget's a working document, it's always going to change. You want it to change, you never want it to be stagnant. Because then that just means somebody's not keeping it accurate and up to date. Um, assumptions are going to change, your enrollment, your attendance percentages, um, the economic conditions with the state, with the world, everything is going to impact that. So there should always be revisions. Um, regular revisions provide more accuracy and transparency. Um, monitoring helps, right? With that year-end surprise, there shouldn't be a bunch of surprises at the year-end. Why did we suddenly have a $6 million windfall or, you know, negative? Again, if there is, just be able to explain it. Um, the spending plans should align with all of those funds. And then communication across departments, right? It's not the large swings. I will tell you, as a district CBO, I swept those sites budgets. They didn't spend their budgets by April, I swept all of them. I always had one or two principals going, no, wait, we have a plan, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. And so I'm like, oh, I'm going to have a swing, I'm going to have money left over, oh. It's fine, right? You could talk about how, hey, we have a site, they're going to do this with the money, and therefore we're going to see a swing. Or you budget for it, right? You show it, you reduce it by those that you took, and you keep the one in there in the 5,000s or 4,000s because they have a plan to spend those monies. Um, but you make those adjustments. Um, and again, it just evolves as changes and conditions change. So accuracy throughout regular review and adjustments, you guys all just want to be on the same page. And I think it's you now.
All right.
I checked one more, sorry.
That's okay. So hopefully, you know, Jennifer laid the foundation for some of the questions that are going to be coming at us tonight. So hopefully that gives you just a little bit more of an understanding. So we are going to get into the questions, so I'm just going to read the question and then we'll go into the response. Some of them are short and sweet, some of them are a little bit longer, okay? So our first question, and, and we did have questions from two trustees. Um, we're, we're going back and forth between those questions just to allow them equal time. And we weren't sure if we were going to be cut off at two hours or not. Looks like we're going to continue going forward so we can answer everybody's questions. Uh, but, uh, so I'm going to start there with budget development, monitoring, and adoption. So we had the question, are there improvements or adjustments that FICMAT suggests to strengthen, um, Apple Valley's budget processes? So beyond what's already in the report, and we're going to talk more about that, um, at the five o'clock session. I think our biggest thing is, we just really want to talk about increased communication, right? Um, let, let's be totally honest, the reason why, and I'm not trying to slam the district, the board, or anybody sitting out here, but, you know, because I see faces that we interviewed, right? That came in and, and shared information with us. There were lots of questions though, so we could tell, and even listening to public comment, people that came up here before us tonight. We, we can all acknowledge that there's been a lack of trust that has developed here in terms of relationships. So what we would push more than anything else in terms of improvements is just increased communication. Um, we, we ended up, you know, Jennifer talked about it, those SACS forms are unfriendly. I come from the program side of the house, I'm going to take my glasses on and off, I apologize. So I've reached that age and I, I, to read, I need them, I can't see you if they're on. Um, so I come from the program side of the house. I am not the person that sat in the seat touching the buttons. Now, as superintendent of a, a little tiny district, I was also CBO. So I had to handle all the finances, but I wasn't the one entering it into the computer, I had help with that. Um, so I understand finance, but, but being able to interpret what is in those SACS documents, I think is one of the most important things that you can do. So we made suggestions even during interviews that the district, you know, provide the PowerPoint upfront to board members in the community. And they were like, yes, we'll do that. Um, to make sure that people have an opportunity to digest what's in there and, and, and also what's in those SACS forms. So then those questions can be meaningful. Making sure that the presentation includes all of the assumptions that you can go through and you can explain what that budget was built on. So that increased communication, I think, is the thing that we would push more than anything else. We did, just through the work that we do, um, around the state, Jennifer has shared a couple of items, a couple of tools with the district that they could glean from, possibly use that format. So I know that they're interested in taking a look at those, and we just provided those, I believe, today. Um, so they'll be looking at those. So, so really having the opportunity, that, that opportunity to increase understanding throughout that entire budget development, the budget monitoring, um, and, and that adoption, making sure that those conversations are happening, that you are informing people in a, in a, a meaningful way and also bringing them along. It is a difficult thing. School finance is a difficult thing. Um, I was supposed to pop up when Jennifer was doing her little thing and just equate it to, um, a home finance. So that's truly how I try to think about it, right? So at my own personal finances, I can kind of make a, a similar analogy, I'm going to call it. Uh, that's probably wrong for all you English majors in here, but, um, but, you know, I'll, I'll use that. So I know that if I sat down in June and I say, okay, I'm going to try to predict what my income's going to be over the year. I have a pretty good idea, and I'm going to go ahead and put that on a little spreadsheet, or I'm going to write that out. I also kind of know what, I'm going to guess what my food bill is going to be, what my mortgage is going to be, what I think I'm going to spend on medical, what I think I'm going to spend here and there. Yeah, I could go ahead and plan all that out. We start moving through, the minute I make that plan, it's out of date, right? Because maybe two weeks later, I take my son to the dentist and he needs braces. That wasn't part of my budget, but guess what? I'm going to have to make sure that now that's included, so I'm going to have to revise my home budget to make sure that it does that. Maybe my air conditioner went out, all of a sudden that wasn't part of my budget, I'm going to have to make sure that I do that. So I always try to just equate, you know, school finance to what we handle every day at home. You know, the reserves, in my opinion, is your savings account. It's a one-time thing, it's the money that's sitting there for those emergency situations. I know that I need to live within my means. I know that I don't need to spend more than what I bring into my home, but that happens sometimes. So that's when I go to my savings account. When that savings account is gone, as an individual, I'm going to be bankrupt. As a school district, you're going to have to take an emergency appropriation, you're going to go and solvent. So we're going to talk a little bit more about that when we get to the later presentation. But I just wanted to, to make that similarity, to try and make some, some connections there. So again, in terms of budget development, monitoring, and adoption, our biggest thing here would just be back to that clear communication. All right, that is our number one thing that, that we think is so important for every school district. Because we've been around this state, we've seen this before, we see that lack of trust. But you can build it back. Because I think every single person sitting here, whether you're sitting up here or you're sitting in the audience, I am hoping you are here for kids. I am hoping that's the reason that you are in this business. That's why I went into education, right? And every single person plays a role. I don't care if you're sitting up here, if you're a part of certificated, if you're part of classified, every single person pays, plays a role in that. So we all need to have an understanding of school finance, what's happening so that we can best serve the students that, that are here every single day. So there, there's my little pitch on that. All right, we're going to get to cash management. Are there any concerns or recommendations regarding how Apple Valley manages cash flow? No, there really isn't. Your cash flow looked really good to us, the only thing we would suggest is to do a two-years, right? So most people, I'm going to say we see it over and over again across the state, most people do current year. Our standard is that you do current year plus one more, and here's the reason why. You're getting into spring, and if you don't know what cash looks like on the other side of June, you could have a problem in the early part of the following year. So if you haven't prepared a cash flow that also includes the following year, then, then, then surprises can happen. And we've seen districts get in trouble for that. So that would be our only suggestion there. So Jennifer and I are going to be popping back and forth, um, as we go through the questions, okay? So your turn. I'll take that from you.
I'll move it, I'll advance it, 14 slides. Um, so this question was, what's causing, um, this spending of our district's reserves and assets? And what decisions can we make to stop this spending? Again, I kind of encourage you to not look at the assets piece of it and look at your reserves. And so I don't know if you can tell, but on this slide, it's showing that your reserves, um, if I'm going to look at the bigger picture. It shows that your reserves are decreasing. So 83 million to 85 to 68 to 65. And so obviously, it's the deficit spending, right? The last three years, we've been deficit spending. And so what's happening to our reserves, it's impacting the assets, right? Because the reserves are going down, but I would just keep that kind of piece off of it and ask what is happening with our reserves. And it's that your deficit spending, you're spending more than you're receiving. And as far as what decisions we make to stop that, it's a local decision, right? How are you spending your money? And how do you want to continue to spend the money? What's, what's, what's impacting and what is our major deficit? Are we overstaffed? Are we funding programs that aren't beneficial? I mean, there's just a number of things. And so local decisions are going to have to kind of dissect the budget to see what's causing that deficit spending.
All right. So I'm going to actually talk about these two questions together because I think that they're just totally linked, right? Um, so one was related to funds and reserves, we'll read that one. So given that Apple Valley's not maintained a 5% reserve and that the recent AB 1200 projections indicate the district may not meet the 3% reserve requirement, what specific steps can Apple Valley take to build and sustain a healthier reserve level? And then deficit spending, it was Apple Valley's been experiencing deficit spending, while our business services team's working diligently to reverse this trend, what guidance can FICMAT provide to assist in eliminating ongoing deficit spending? So, so first of all, I want to commend the, the board for, for increasing your reserve. Because I'm going to tell you, that 3% absolutely is not enough. I'm going to tell you that 5% probably is not enough. Because that is only going to cover salaries for, for a very short period of time. If something went truly awry, um, very short period of time. Um, I pulled the data, um, I went back to, uh, school services post annually, uh, what the average reserve levels are. And for Unified, the most recent data that, that we have is from 2324, so I know it's outdated, but they just posted that in April 25. That's usually when they'll post that, so that's when they'll do the next year. Um, for Unified School District, the average across California was 24.36%, all right? So, so I just want you to put that in the back of your mind in terms of, you know, reserve levels. But we've already talked about it, you have to live within your means, right? And so, um, that's going to require some hard work. You don't get there very easily because those numbers represent people, they represent programs, they represent things that are important to the district. They could possibly represent things that you have done for, you know, 20, 30 years. That's, that's the hard conversations that are going to have to take place. So I'll tell you what we've seen be successful. We've seen districts set up budget committee, an advisory committee, some kind of committee that is representative of people. Um, it represents the district, it represents, it has board members that are representative on there, it has certificated, classified, management, non-management, parents. Really, it is a committee of people so that you're seeing it from all sides come together. And then you talk about everything. You have to have an understanding of what money's coming in, where you are appropriating your money to. You can talk about that through funds and what kinds of things are in different funds. You, you really, at that point, when you get to that point and you are having to make those hard decisions, there can't be any sacred cows. You really have to evaluate what is effective with your students and where you're getting the most bang for your buck. You have to evaluate every single program that you have out there. You know, if you have walk to learn, you know, and kids are going, what does that look like? And are you seeing the results with your students? So that's where that group comes together, puts their heads together, talks about everything, makes a list of priorities, and then makes recommendations to the board. And then it, and that falls on the board's purview. You know, you're going to have to make those hard decisions, but hopefully you have heard from every, um, every representative there so that you've heard all the voices, right? So, so that's, that's a tidbit that we would recommend in terms of, um, making those hard decisions. In terms of deficit spending, we already said you live within your means. But I'll tell you, we have seen an uptick across the, the California in terms of deficit spending. Jennifer was right, one-time funds that flooded in during COVID, right? Whether it was COVID-related learning loss, all those things, just greatly increased money that were coming into districts. To the point that people couldn't spend it fast enough and didn't know how to spend it, I'm going to tell you. Because it happened so quickly, the world shut down. And so, once those one-time funds expired, right? A lot of times, people use those one-time funds on bodies. So they might put additional people in place, they may put additional, I know, across the state, additional health aides, additional things to handle the things that were, that districts were experiencing at the time. And yes, it was being paid for out of one-time funds. But if you don't make a very real, um, plan for backing out of that, then, once those funds are gone, the one-time funds, then that staffing shifts over to your unrestricted general fund. And that's where you take the biggest hit. Because your unrestricted general fund was not designed to support all those positions because you had those one-time money that could support that in the past. I'm not saying make cuts in any way, shape, or form. It's a local decision, you have to decide what is important. And you guys have goals and priorities, you already have it through your LCAP, I know you've talked about it here in meetings. Um, so everyone should know what those goals and priorities are. But then you have to make sure that the expenditures flow within that and that you can afford it. So, um, and here's one more thing I will say about deficit spending before we move on to the next questions is, if you don't make cuts early, whatever those look like, you're going to have to cut more later. You're going to have to cut deeper. So because it compounds over the course of the year. So you want to get as far ahead of this as you can and just make the decisions that you can to reduce deficit spending. Because otherwise, you will have to cut much, much. Because otherwise, you will have to cut much, much deeper a year down the road, two years down the road, three years down the road. Okay.
So we got the question, can you explain the contribution 8980? And they kind of go hand in hand. So why are we moving unrestricted funds to restricted programs? And I just took a picture of the unaudited actuals. I tried to blow up so you could see the number. But you have the same, not the exact dollar amount, but you have the same contribution in your adopted budget. The dollar amount's going to be different. But contributions from the unrestricted general fund, unfortunately, there are programs that aren't sufficiently allocated funds to support the program. And it may be a program that you guys decided to run as a district, right? And you're only receiving, let's say, $200,000, but the program costs $250,000. And so the unrestricted general fund, you guys have decided for years that you're going to contribute to that program because you like, let's say, it's a reading program. You like that reading program. You want to keep that reading program. And so you know there's going to be a contribution to it. And so it's programs that are running within the district that don't have enough funding. There's also legal requirements. So I don't know if you wanted to jump up and do your special ed addition. But we are legally required, school districts are legally required, to educate the special needs students.
Students with disabilities. Right? And so through IDEA, special ed students, your most needy students, here's what I'm going to say. Special ed is one of the most grossly underfunded programs that there is. We get some money from the federal government. We get some money from the state government. We know that it is nowhere even close to meeting the needs of our needy students, which is our obligation as a school district. So every single school district out there, I have not come across one that is not contributing to special ed, to meet the needs of those students. So that's all she's talking about. And every single one of those students has an IEP. You're legally required to do what's in the IEP, right? So there you go.
Did you do anything else? No, that's it. She says it way better. So the other piece that I will add about the contributions, though, is just having that number up there isn't enough information for everybody. So you want to know, like, list out the programs that you're contributing to. I want to see every single program that we're contributing to for the 41. You need to know those facts because it tells the story, right? Our budget tells the story on how we're spending our dollars. And so when you see numbers like this, it's a huge number. And so she's correct that that special needs students aren't funded. I think it's in the 40 or 45% on what they're funding. And yet, we're legally required to educate the students, which absolutely, no problem, right? But you need to know how much you're contributing to that program. And that's not to say that that program just gets whatever amount, right? There are things that management is doing that can control the cost of those programs. But there are other programs that you decided to contribute to. But again, showing what makes up that contribution tells a story. And so knowing the facts behind that dollar amount. But it is the unrestricted dollars that goes over to the restricted side because, in essence, if they're negative, we're making up for that negative. And so we are required to move the unrestricted general funds to the restricted side of the house to cover those programs.
All right. Next, we're going to go to employee benefits and collective bargaining. So as Apple Valley anticipates increased costs related to employee benefits, collective bargaining agreements, what advice can FICMAT offer to help us prepare for and manage these financial obligations responsibly? So I think everybody probably knows that, you know, staffing takes a majority of your resources. And that's what it takes to run a school district, right? I came from the program side of the house. My heart belongs in the classroom. I was a kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher, sixth grade teacher, absolutely loved that. Loved being a school site principal and everything that that involved. All the persons involved in running school sites and involved in running a district make up your salary and benefits. So I will say this. I will say that it's truly a local decision. I've heard it said many, many times. I hear my boss say it more than anybody else. But that when COLA comes in from the state, if it doesn't come in more than 4.5%, at this point, is kind of where you're breaking even in terms of, you know, if everything else stayed the same and you got 4.5%, it would cover your costs. Because you're going to naturally have some increased costs. On top of that, you also have step and column. You have increased health and welfare. I think right now, the average, when we went out and there was a, one of the providers had provided like 20 districts, I think the average was like 8.5% increase. I have no idea what your increases in health and welfare, but we get hit with things like that. Inflation hits, fuel costs more, the cost of goods and services are more in terms of contracts go up. So beyond that, you're going to be probably deficit spending. It doesn't mean that you can't offer close to that, that you can't offer COLA, that you can't offer even in excess of COLA. But you're going to have to figure out how to pay for that. It has to be, again, living within your means. So if beyond, if you're going to offer something beyond that, then you have to figure out where you're going to cut to pay for that. So I would say that that's the most important thing is realize that you absolutely can offer things. You want your employees to be well-paid. You want the people who are involved with children, they are the ones that are offering those programs every single day. We know that they are a huge resource, a great resource to us. We want them to be well-paid. But we also have to live within our means. So if we are going to do that, and as you're looking at approaching future bargaining, whatever that looks like for your district, you have to find the ways to pay for it upfront. Know where you're going to make a decision to make some cuts. Because we've already seen, and we will see when we get to the FHRA, yes, you've deficit spent the last two years. You're projected to do it this year for a third year. Then something has to change. Otherwise, you're cutting into those reserves. So that would be our suggestion there. In terms of staffing and organizational alignment, based on FICMAT's findings, is Apple Valley's current staffing, including everybody, let's say, appropriately structured and aligned with the district's operational and education needs? This is an area we did not get into. So when I say that we go as far as we can in the FHRA in terms of documents and the questions that we ask, in order to answer this, we would have to do a staff and org. And honestly, we don't offer that except in relationship to maybe a business department that we're going in to do a financial review. We'll go ahead and take a look at your business department because we feel like we have enough comparables. Because every single district is different. No two districts are alike. You know, in terms of understanding what funding flows into one district, yes, there are similarities. But there are definitely districts, or differences, I'm sorry. And so we don't have the ability to take a look at that and even comment on that. So I just wanted to say that on that particular question, sorry. All right.
Yeah. So is there any pending transaction that would necessitate having $45 million in the Cafeteria Special Reserve Fund and the Special Reserve Fund for capital outlay? So the $45 million, I'm going to state, is inflated currently. I think my earlier slides helped with that. No, I think I'm going to break it down here. Again, remember, the reserve and the assets. Reserves are part of the assets. So the $45 million is just a little overstated. So we don't need to total them together either. So remember, each fund is a standalone. And so the cafeteria, I'm going to talk about the Special Reserve for Cafeteria. So your cafeteria fund, ending fund balance for the adopted, or the unaudited actuals, was the $10,108, right? So that's your fund balance. Is it high? You haven't, I think you're projected to deficit spend this year. You haven't deficit spent for the past three years. I've only gone back three years. But there's rules and regulations with the Cafeteria Fund and how much you can have in that fund. You cannot just build your ending fund balance in cafeteria. That means the state or the feds overpaid you. Not saying overpaid you in that you weren't deserving of the dollars, right? You fill out the monthly reports and they pay you, but it hasn't been spent down. And I'm going to guess that there's Cafeteria's kitchens that probably have needs. And so the district needs to make a plan, which I'm guessing they work with the director. They make a plan to spend down these funds. And this fund is also audited. And so somebody from the state comes in and audits the cafeteria funds. So there might be a purpose for it because you might have a plan on what you're going to spend those funds on. And so they might have been building the reserves for a purpose. And now there's going to be a plan for spending the funds. And they're going to have to also abide by the state and not exceed the amount that they're allowed. And so there's definitely going to be a plan to spend those. And you can see in the budget this year that there is a plan to spend down a little bit more of what's in your cafeteria fund. Now, as far as the Special Reserve for Capital Outlay, so not deficit spending in as far as mine. I think in 2425 or 2324, you did. So I did not go into the specifics with the district. But these funds can only be built, or only be used for capital outlay projects. And so the discussions happening throughout board meetings, it's what are you going to do with those funds and what are they being used for? It could be that the ending fund balance, so it's increased from 6.7 to 11 million this year. This past year, from unaudited actuals 2324 to 2425, I'm going to guess there was some type of grant received or money received. And again, those funds are restricted for specific purposes. And so it has to go only to the capital outlay within your facilities. So how you spend down those funds is a local decision. And then the number of, oh. So I just added the note about it kind of being inflated in that you wanted to look at just the $10 million for the Cafeteria Fund and just the $11 million for the Special Reserve. Okay, so what's causing this discrepancy between projected, reported, and actual spending? Sorry. So again, in the presentation about the budget, I talked about kind of doing the comparison and looking at the adopted budget and then comparing it to the unaudited actuals. We definitely want to see a discrepancy, right? We want, even if it's more or less, we never want to compare the adopted budget with the unaudited actuals because this is a complete guesstimate. This is us trying to figure out what we have. The state literally hasn't even passed the budget yet. So we have a lot of assumptions. We have a lot of guesstimates on our students, on our staffing, on our programs. And so comparing the adopted budget with the unaudited actuals, there should be discrepancies. Estimated actuals and unaudited actuals, you want to compare those two. And you want to see what those discrepancies are. And then, again, staff should be able to explain what those variances are. There's going to be times, and I think we talked about this a little bit with some people in the interviews, where you budget for an amount, let's say, in the 4,000s. I'll try and use simple numbers, $1,000. And you only spent 50. So you have 950 that kind of, it shows this kind of remaining, right? In that one budget line. Or if you're doing a comparison with your first interims because you have line detail, right? That 950 that's left over falls to the bottom at unaudited actuals. So the 950 is now gone because you have your actuals. So the 1,000 is what you budgeted, but you only spent 950. So that additional 50,000 just fell to the bottom. It fell to the net increase or decrease. And so it's part of what makes up that number. But what you budgeted and what you actually spent, the budget goes away at unaudited actuals. There is no carrying, like, comparing a budget to a next year's budget. It's apples and oranges. Because your unaudited actuals, your ending fund balance is now taking all of that money that you didn't spend in all of the classifications, and it's now falling to your ending fund balance. And so now you start a new year with, here's our budget, here's our actuals to date. And you're going to see that on the interims. Here's our actuals to date. And are we spending more or less than what we budgeted? And there could be times where your actuals to date are higher. And yeah, somebody should be aligning the budget. It can happen, but it shouldn't. Your budget should be looking at all of that, right? Aligning your projected budget to make sure that you're looking at your actuals and that your actuals to date are being tracked. Maybe you signed on to a service contract because you weren't able to hire somebody and nobody's actually updated the services budget. But yet, contract's getting paid every month. And so your actuals to date are paying that $10,000 a month, but the budget's in the one, nope, in the salaries and benefits. Almost went with those classifications, the codes. They're in the salaries and benefits. And so those are the budget revisions, right? We now know that we aren't hiring a position. We've got a contract to replace that person. So now our salaries and benefits are going to be reduced. And now that services and operating expenditures are going to be increased. And so all of that takes place throughout the year. So projected, reported, and actuals. Estimated actuals, unaudited actuals. You can use your first interim to actuals. You can compare that as you're moving through the year. You can use your second interim and actuals and compare it through the year. But you just want to make sure that they're aligned. And so the discrepancies, I I'm not sure of any discrepancies. Again, I think it's because we're looking at the adopted budget versus the unaudited actuals. And so in looking at the document that we received, that's the only way that we knew how to explain it. And just showing that a budget is forever changing. So I hope we answered that sufficiently. Okay. Might have to go into that one more. Oh, and then what is the interfund transfer for 7310? Sorry. So 7310 is indirect costs. So it is administration overhead. It's basically the cost of doing business. Every program depends on payroll, HR, technology, the leadership, right? And so it has a cost. At the end of every year, at unaudited actuals, there's actually a calculation that's based on your expenditures. And it comes up with a rate. So that's the allowable rate that the district can charge to the various restricted programs. And they should charge to those various restricted programs. Because there's a lot of manpower that goes behind those restricted dollars. The plans that you have to bring forward, everybody that you're paying, and actually trying to tie one classroom to like an HR person, right?[1728.13] If we were a lawyer, we're going to do .10 in this classroom, .05 in this classroom. It just can't be done. And so they came up with this indirect cost rate. It's calculated every year at your unaudited actuals. You can actually see it on the form ICR. And it sets your rate for the next years. And so that's a percentage that you should charge. We as FICMAT even say to charge the special ed programs and those programs that are requiring contributions. Because if or when it ever happens that these programs suddenly get fully funded and you are not accounting for the cost of running those programs, which is your overhead, then they don't really have a true picture of what the cost of that program is. And so while it looks like it's increasing the cost to special ed, it's really telling the story of here's our special ed revenue, here's our expenditure, and oh, by the way, here's our overhead we're charging. And that's the cost of the true program. And so that's the reason for that. So typically, it's a negative to the unrestricted because that's where most of the payroll and HR and technology are being charged from. And again, it's a calculation in the unaudited actuals. But it's a negative so that it credits those expenditures. So it reduces those expenditures and then transfers it to the restricted side. So net zero. However, you have other programs that you can charge indirect to. So it's not only 7310, but 7350. And you have to look in the other funds. And then again, there's a TRC. You cannot print this report without these netting zero. And so the 7310s and 50s must net zero. But tracking it between the general fund, Fund 13, I think you can charge 11 and 12, your, oh, look me codes, your child development and your adult ed program. You can charge those programs as well. And you should because it's also, right? It's paying for your staff in the business office and the leadership. So what's that? Oh, did you change the slide? Oh, I didn't know you changed the slide. Sorry. No, but you changed it from the last one. Sorry, I thought you were telling me I had another dot. Okay, so what's causing the overspending in the special reserve for capital outlay? So I'm guessing, oh, I don't have 92. So I think we kind of talked about that one with the Fund 13 where you were talking about the reserves and offsets and why is it 45? And do we need that? Is that one Fund 40? Right, so that's yeah, it's 40.
You got it?
Yeah. So not deficit spending, not projected to deficit spend in the reports that I have, that I've pulled back. 23, 24 you did. If you're spending more than your revenues, it's because of the timing of when you receive the revenues. So school districts don't have the cash flow. If they get approved for some type of a capital improvement, you don't have the cash flow, right? To start building and start this big project. And so you wait until the funds come in. So the funds come in, maybe last year, maybe two years ago or this year. And then you spend them down. And so if you are deficit spending in Fund 40, it's because the grants came in. And now you have, you're fully funded for that project. And now you can spend down those funds. Do you want to make sure that all of your contracts are sufficient and that they are, there's enough revenue to cover that? Those expenditures, yes. But that's something that your staff is managing. And so all of those funds. But the timing of when that money comes in and the timing of the expenditures, it could be that they are maybe having a net decrease in that because the funding comes in first. And now we can move in with, move forward with the project because we just don't have the cash flow to start a big project without the money. And I don't know about you, but I want the state to pay me before I start a project.
All right, so we're just going to close out this portion, the question and answer session. So first of all, I just want to say thank you for inviting us back today. This is not our norm. We don't normally come and do board study sessions. But we just really felt like hopefully we could help bring some clarity, help bring some understanding. I'm not sure that we have, but we're trying. But I will tell you, I just want to get back to, you know, the reason we're here and the reason we felt this could be beneficial is because we saw a breakdown in trust, right? We know that when there's a breakdown in trust, I said this before, the ones that truly lose are students. So we've got to figure out a way to get back to building that trust, getting back to working in a collaborative relationship. That means things like increasing the communication, absolutely. We talked to the district when we were here about, you know, doing the presentations in advance, making sure that you can explain things so that there's an understanding. Absolutely, that's their job. Board members, I will tell you, we were willing to come back because we said, let's give us your questions in advance. We're not intimately knowledgeable about even what's in your financial reports, even though, you know, we asked for them for the FHRA. We look for certain things within that 190-page document, right? So I would say that even the people sitting there that are preparing those documents, they don't know every single number that's in there. And it requires some research, right? So I would say, give them that same common courtesy. That's part of the trust to provide those questions in advance or come in and ask those questions in advance so that you have an understanding as you're coming into the meetings. I think that that building trust goes both ways. There may be some people here in the room or people sitting up here that says, well, we're too far gone. I would certainly hope that you're not saying that because every single student that's sitting in your classrooms deserves for everybody to come together and work collaboratively towards a common goal. So I'm going to continue to preach that because I truly believe that in my heart of hearts, that we all play a role in this. So it means figuring out, you know, this isn't a marriage where you can get a divorce. No, no divorce is allowed. You guys are in this for the long haul. You're in this till the end until you leave the district. So you got to figure out a way to get back to building that trust and back to a collaborative relationship. So I would just encourage you to do that. And so I'm going to say thank you one more time. I'm going to open it up and say, was there something that, we'll try to answer your questions if at all possible, but but
Based on things you said. On Slide 9.
Which one?
9.
9, we're going to go backwards here.
I'm just curious what the benefit would be of adding a Fund 17? Because you said, you mentioned, we don't have it, but some districts do. I was just curious.
So what's the benefit of having a Fund 17? Sorry, she didn't hear you.
Sorry. I'm hearing they did, they pick up what they want. I don't get them.
Can you go to the mic, ma'am?
Yeah.
Good call. I should know that, right? It's actually another fund to manage, so
And it's optional.
And it is optional. Some districts will hold their 3% in there and not touch it. The problem with that is your expenditures and that 3% fluctuates. And so now you have a bunch of activity going in and out. Again, if you have a large reserve and you know that there's something in the future that you're going to build or project and you're going to use these reserves, you could set them aside in Fund 17, but know that they are considered unrestricted and can be moved back into the general fund. And so I would say for a district that has large reserves and knows of some project that's coming up or, I don't know, roof replacements or a building of something that they don't have specific funding for and they've saved their reserves and they build their reserves for this purpose, then you would set them aside. Sorry.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is a TRC? I'm sorry.
I used an accounting term.
No, not necessarily an accounting term. So it's a technical review checklist, right? Look, critical, it's a critical error. Basically, the SACH reports, there's a million checklist. And they go through this 194 pages to make sure that all of these checklists align. And so, yeah, so you have to clear all of your TRCs. Sorry, I tried not to do that, but I did.
Well, I have one question. And I think we'll get to the questions in the next one. On the slides 6 and 7.
6 and 7, you said?
6, 6 and 7.
I can't get this to go back, so I apologize. It's not moving with the clicker either.
Slide 6 was the question of budget, budget fundamentals. The budget fundamentals on, I'll just add the question. I think you'll probably figure it out.
Okay.
There was a mention about one-time funds that should be used for one-time resources. You mentioned it once and you mentioned it again in the next slide. And I do know that that question has come up even from this dais to find out what we could do. So as the FICMAT team, what suggestions will you have in place for us or suggest for us? My brain is saying we need to know who is, who was hired or what positions were hired under the one-time funds so that we'll have appropriate decisions to make. And until we know that, it is impossible to make that decision.
I do think it is good for you to have an understanding of what positions are paid for out of one-time funds or were, and then were moved into the general fund.
Correct.
But I think what's even more critical is what we talked about. You're going to have to have an understanding of things across the board. You're going to have to have, that's going to be that group coming together to have those discussions, to understand. Because the one-time dollars are gone. There's a little trickling. Oh, yeah, and you guys got a block grant, so that is a one-time fund. So, but if you have positions that were hired under one-time funds that came over into the general fund, that would be a really good piece of information to understand, right? But you are going to have to look at it as a whole. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm going to add on to her budget advisory work group. I actually worked at a district that was negative. And coming together is very hard. There's a lot of emotions, there's a lot of stress, there's a lot of unknowns. It's scary. The budget advisory meeting, you're kind of breaking down the budget and you're just learning all the pieces of it. You're defining your base program and what do we want to add to, to, that could, that could impact the deficit spending, right? Here's our base program. However, we need this, this, and this. And so it's our base program plus. But all of those conversations, breaking down all of those, all of those restricted programs and understanding how you're staffing, how you're doing, just breaking down the budget and understanding it and kind of building it as a team, going through that cycle, is, it's just very, very worthwhile. I still have teachers from my old district that reach out because of things that I taught them when we were doing that. And he's like, it's still working for me. I still use it. And so that district is doing well. And so they work together. But it's rebuilding the program and understanding everything that's made up of this.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. I just want to make sure that trustee Akbar was done.
I'm not done.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You did mention about, you mentioned the budget advisory or the budget. We have a budget committee in the district. The unfortunate thing is that we failed to do it the way we had agreed to do it initially. And the agreement was that we were going to have 7, 7, and 7 from each of the bargaining units, except that when we come to the meeting, it is not that. And so the teachers who come or even the classified that show up, they are over outnumbered. And so they are listening to this presentation that has, that was actually presented to us as a board. So they need to hear it so that they'll have a opportunity to have the conversation in order to have a good understanding. You know what I'm, you understand what I'm saying? So we are struggling with that piece to be able to, when we say we are having a budget committee, that the committee is made up of the actual number of people that we said we were going to have. So we are not top-heavy. And the classified is not represented. Or the certificated are just a handful of certificated. So we need to be able to have, I'm saying it in public because it has been a problem for many staff members that presented to us, that we need to really go back to what we said we would do. And that is to have even number of representatives for all of the bargaining units to be present so they'll have the understanding of what this is all about. And I'm so glad that you came. I chose not to do so much on the FICMAT because I wanted to hear the information. Unfortunately, I didn't give you any answers because I had a family emergency and I had to leave the state. I just got back. So this is important for me. I needed to hear what you have uncovered so that we will know where to go moving forward. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so my question is on a statement you made about budgets and that they should be based on reasonable assumptions. So that is slide number 6. So when
Slide which one? I'm sorry.
Slide number 6. We're on there. So when budgets are created with reasonable assumptions, that means they're built upon trends of revenue and expenditure. So when we look at our past two years of budgets, meaning our revenues and our expenditures, and compare them to unaudited actuals, the difference between revenues, unless there's something catastrophic happening, I would think it wouldn't be such a great difference from the previous year. Considering our enrollment has stayed pretty steady, I would think that our revenues would stay pretty steady, too. Am I not understanding that?
So your enrollment can stay steady. But if the kids don't show up for class, if that percentage doesn't stay steady, then you're receiving less funds. If your applications for free and reduced, English learners, foster youth, homeless, and there's the top one, I'm going to forget.
Fostered.
Yeah. If that percentage change, it's a huge impact. And so there's so many pieces of it that can change.
So even with all of that remaining rather consistent, should there really be a difference of, for the past two years, $20 million in revenue?
There can be. So again, remember the past few years, we've got a lot of one-time. Just this year, right? The budget was passed. We, everybody did their budget in June. And the state adopted a budget giving every school district $313 per ADA to a school district. So for one district that we're working with, it's $8.5 million that they didn't have in their budget. And so I don't know what the dollar amount is for your district, but there can be, there's a bunch of universal TK dollars that came out. I mean, it fluctuates. You have, the federal, a lot of school districts didn't include some of the federal dollars because of the
What was happening at the federal level?
What was happening at the federal level and the president level and cutting everything off. Again, that's the county that gives the district guidance on how to address that. And so you're, you're going to see fluctuations and it might be significant. I can't say exactly why and what dollar amount. But it could fluctuate.
And here's
Staff, the staff should be able to explain it. At that point, the staff should be able to explain what those variances are. Would I go to the past and look at it? I mean, at this point, your unaudited actuals, you might want to say, why did we have some variances between estimated actuals and unaudited actuals? What are those variances? I will tell you right now, your salaries and benefits, they were within 1% on your unrestricted. Your restricted side was up. But again, that's expected because you planned for hiring all these people or substitutes or hourly or what have you, and it just doesn't happen. But your unrestricted, your salaries and benefits were right on. 4s and 5 thousands possibly. Four and five thousands possibly fluctuate. Oh, my gosh, here I go again. Bucks and supplies and services and contracted, they might fluctuate. And again, is it more than 5% and is there a reason for it? It could have been something broke. You bought a large piece of equipment in the sixth, in the capital outlay. Again, I caught myself. There's just so many things that impact the budget, and it changes. I'm telling you, the minute we print the budget and get it to you for the board meeting, it's wrong. Something changed. And so it's, it's just that influx, unfortunately.
And I would just add to this. It, it all comes down to communication. So when you are developing that budget in June, you should have a very clear understanding of what assumptions that budget was built on, all right? Then the governor is going to adopt the budget. Sometimes things change, and then sometimes the district has to come back and do a 45-day revision because it's been material enough that it changed things materially enough. I don't think that's necessarily been the guidance in your county, I don't think, to come back and do a 45-day revision. And that, that varies throughout the state in terms of what one county says is a material difference or not. But then when first interim comes around, you have more information. The budget's been adopted, you've been in school for a few months. You have an idea of how many kids showed up. You can kind of take a look at your attendance rate for those first few months, then look at historical averages and say, is this tracking with where we were the first couple of months, the last couple of years? Or is that looking different so that we can make some changes? And then first interim, again, you're going to have a list of assumptions that that is built on. And so you, you should have an understanding when there is some differences, is what I'm saying. And that comes down to communication.
So, quick question. So in terms of this year's budget, if our enrollment went up, if our unduplicated student count went up, then our revenue would go up, correct?
Only if your ADA, your average daily attendance, also tracked along with your enrollment?
Yeah. If you, if you used your historical trend, let's say it's 96, and for whatever reason, these first few months or a couple of months of school-
A fluke.
Yeah, or, or you're only coming in at 94, right? That can impact the revenue. So it's, it's, it's just a little complicated.
And I would say that, that, you know, the district should be able to tell you in terms of what, what is 1% in ADA look like? So if you used to be 96 and now it's 95, what's the difference in those dollars? As a principal, I'd want to know that. As a principal, I wanted, so in my district, we had a little, you know, competition going on. And I'm one in my school on top. So that means you're, you know, implementing things to get kids in seats every single day. Because we know that for every single day kids miss, there's a gap in their education. You can't make that up. The teacher's not going to teach that same lesson again, right? So getting kids in seats is one of the most important things you can do. But increasing your ADA even 1% can bring additional dollars into the district. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Final question to ask.
Okay.
Okay.
As I look at one of those points that you made, it's not in the slide. It shows that we, we had a deficit spending in 2023 of 1.7 million. And then we went on to 2024, and we deficit spent six point. This is in the next, it's in our package, packet that we read. And so in 2025, we are projecting 5.6 million. So we projected 6.4 outside of the 1 point something we had the year before. So this year, we're projecting 6.4, $4 million. And so next year, we are projecting 5 point something million dollars. So it just seems like we are projecting higher and higher.
Are you, are you talking about deficit spending?
Deficit spending.
Yeah.
It's in our, it's in our packet, it's in our board packet. Yeah.
Yeah, we will be, we'll be discussing that in the next presentation when we're going over the FHRA. Okay?
All right, ladies, so we'll take a quick break before 5 o'clock here.
Perfect.
We'll take, let's see, 4:55. We can just take 10 minutes so everybody can take a break. And then we'll be back on the record here just about 5:05.
And then we'll need some IT help one more time to load our next presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Trust me, I don't even know how to close this thing. I got this.
Okay, Jason gave us the heads up, so we'll just call back the meeting to order. And we'll move on to item two is receive FICMAT Fiscal Health Risk and Analyst Report. Ladies, you guys are up again.
All right. Well, thanks for having us back one more time. All right, we're just going to go ahead and jump on in. So this part of our presentation totally relates to the fiscal health risk analysis. So our agenda for this part of the meeting is that we're going to tell you a little bit about us. We didn't go into depth about who we are, but I'm going to give you a little more background information. We're going to talk just in general about fiscal oversight and then get into our indicators of risk or potential insolventcy, which is something that is posted on our website. So we're going to talk about what those 20 are, get into the FHRA, and then get into the district's results and the next steps for your district. So, all right. So in terms of FICMAT, who are we? We're an independent external state agency. We were created back in 1991 when a school district actually went insolvent. And all of a sudden, people went, oh, my gosh, how did that happen? Because prior to AB 1200 going into place, which is the legislation that created us, it also created the ability for school districts to receive an emergency appropriation if they go insolvent, the process involved with that. But it also brought forward increased transparency on district financials. Because before that school district went insolvent, they did their budget at the beginning of the year, and then you didn't hear about it again pretty much till the end of the year. So AB 1200 put the increased transparency in place of now the district having to come forward and prepare a first interim, a second interim, a third interim if it's warranted, things. So it put a very progressive and more transparent process in place. Once, I want to make clear that the fiscal health risk analysis is something that we do when we're invited in, like Apple Valley did. So Apple Valley reached out to us, said, hey, we want to do a fiscal health risk analysis. That's why we're here. Sometimes we get triggered in to do a fiscal health risk analysis. That was not the reason. In terms of fiscal crisis and management assistance team, we said this throughout our interviews. We tried to say it in every single interview because most people don't know who we are. People, when they hear our name, want to focus on the fiscal crisis piece of our name. And yes, we get involved in fiscal crisis. That is actually not why we're here. But if a school district goes insolvent, Inglewood, we've been in there 13 years, right? We have to go in and do an annual evaluation, work very closely with them. We're involved in that work, but it is a very small part of the work that we do. We like to focus on the management assistance portion of our name, which is what we're doing here today. That's the more preventative type work that we do up and down the state, right? We want to try to help and be helpers along the process so that school districts don't get into that fiscal crisis stage, right? And have to have us imposed on them because then that looks totally different. And that's not good for anybody, especially kids. So I just wanted to make that clear. There's that Assembly Bill 1200, I kind of already talked about that. It really also promoted collaboration between the county office and school districts. County office through AB 1200 have a very specific role in terms of their oversight. So it strengthened that oversight, their ability to see in. So when your school district prepares a budget, prepares first and second interim and audited actuels, those go off to the county office. There is a technical review there. Somebody is looking at those numbers, right? And providing a letter back to the district, and they're responding on those. So it increased that oversight and that responsibility on their part, what the district's required to do, what the county is required to do. The district is absolutely the first level of fiscal oversight, right? That rests with the district's elected board. That is part of your duty as being an elected board is to ensure the financial stability of the district that in turn happens to be pushed down on district administration. That's their job also, to bring information to the board. So working together to ensure that fiscal stability is one of the most important things that can happen. So that's that first level of fiscal oversight. The second layer is the county office. And so, again, they're hopefully being seen as a helper, and they're giving you good information. We think that that's happening. We didn't hear anything contrary to that. But the county office a lot of times will provide that common message to all the districts in their county. So they're providing you direction in terms of what should be included in your budget and those kinds of things. And they also act as an intermediary between the district and the state. So you got district level, you got county level, you got state level. A lot of times if something's happening in a district that the state's going to, you know, ask questions, they'll go to a county office first instead of going directly to a school district. So in terms of indicators of risk or potential insolventcy, so these are 20 areas, again, that we've identified as the ones that most commonly lead down the road to insolventcy. So on our 30-plus years of experience, so in attention to the annual independent audit. If audits are being done late, not timely, if you're not implementing, you know, suggestions in there, that can be a problem. I'm going to just kind of breeze through these, okay? So budget development and adoption, not having an adequate process for that, insufficient budget monitoring, inadequate cash management. I don't think I'm going to read every single one. I think you guys can probably read. But those are the 20 areas, and in fact, those are the first 10. Here's the next 10. I'm going to tell you that that indicators of risk or potential insolventcy, that is on our website, free for districts to see, and there's some things that go along with that. Our fiscal health risk analysis tool is something that we've had on our website for a number of years. It's free for districts to use on their own. Districts can download the tool, they can go in, they can answer yes, no, or not applicable, and they can complete that themselves. Many districts invite us in, just like Apple Valley did, because they want that independent external look. Once you hire us, you don't get to say what goes into our report, right? So they like that, having that outside perspective. It just kind of sometimes gives you a different look. All right, so give you just a little bit of an overview on our tool. It consists of 138 yes or no questions. I will tell you that there's a yes, no, or not applicable. The only time that your risk score starts to tick up is when we answer no to one of the questions, okay? They are weighted differently. So if you are in... There are some questions that are high risk. There's some questions that are low risk. There's some categories that are high risk, some that are low risk. If we answer no to a question that's a high-risk question in a high-risk category, that is going to be scored more than if we answer no to a low-risk question in a low-risk category. So I just want people to know that, that every single no question is not weighted equally. In fact, there is one thing that kind of pushed your district from moderate to high, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. Right there, let's see, that total risk score categories. If you actually have the report, it's at the very end of our report. It tells you what the scores are. So if you're 40% or more, you're considered high risk. You can see moderate and low risk there. Now, what's interesting is your district, their score in and of itself fell within the moderate category. So when we tallied everything up, it went to 31.2%. So it puts you in the moderate risk for insolventcy. What pushed you over is that, and I'm going to have to refer to the report, and I apologize, but at the beginning of the report, we have, so within those 20 areas, there are questions under each of those. We consider some of those questions, the ones that we consider high risk. We have pulled those forward onto pages, let me look, eight and nine, that we consider material weaknesses. So those are a greater risk for your district. There is one, 8.3, that actually took you, if we had answered yes, then you would still be in the moderate risk. That one had a large enough weighting that it bumped you into the high category. It disregarded your 31.2%, and it put you up there. And that question, I'll just go ahead and read it, and we'll talk about it a little bit more when we get there, is if the district has deficit spending in the current or two subsequent fiscal years, has the board approved and implemented a plan to reduce or eliminate deficit spending to ensure fiscal solvency? We think that that is one of the greatest risks to any school district out there. That if you are deficit spending, and it happens, that you have to come up with a plan, and you have to implement a plan, because otherwise you're spending down your reserves and you are spending your savings account. So that particular one bumped you into that category. We used the adopted budget as the financial reporting period. You guys have had an audited actuels, but that had not taken place when we were here for fieldwork. So we have to have a cutoff. So we used your adopted budget, so that's what our answers are based on. We came on site, I think we told you, you know, your district had to upload all kinds of documents ahead of time for us. I don't know, I'm going to say hundreds of documents, it's a lot. And we came on site for those three days and did our interviews, left and did our analysis, and then provided the report. Our report really focuses on systems and processes, right? So it's looking at those 20 areas and how can you improve in those systems and processes? All right. Here are the areas that when we went to, you know, because you can look through here and see all the no answers, and those are the ones honestly I would concentrate on. But when you go to page 10, is that any of my glasses again on that one? It gives you a score breakdown by section. So basically, these are just kind of like your top five in terms of, you know, having a greater risk. So budget monitoring and updates, collective bargaining agreements, deficit spending, general fund, current year, internal controls, and fraud prevention. I do want to make one thing clear on the fraud prevention. So this is an area that we have vetted around as a staff for quite some time because the thing that made you high-risk in that area, I want to be very clear, there's no fraud or anything like that, nothing like that came up. But when you, one of the questions asked, do you have, how does that even work? Yeah, a reporting system, an anonymous reporting system? Do you have a process for actually working through those things that have been reported? So what it does is it encourages people to come forward. We think that that is very important, and we express that to the district, okay? So that's why that particular area is high, is because people weren't aware. Now, it's come to our attention after the fact that I think you have some WeTip posters that are, you know, throughout the district, and I think maybe one or two people may have mentioned the WeTip. But making sure that that's part of your message, right? So every year, when you guys come back to school and you have your annual, you know, whatever, however you do that, make sure people are aware of that. Make sure that your principals are making their staffs aware of it, so that everybody, departments are making people aware of it, so that that is something that is encouraged, so that if somebody sees something, they're going to say something, right? It ensures that the districts, it just helps people to come forward and it ensures that the district resources don't get compromised, right? So it also protects your employees too. You never ever want to put your employees in that situation where they're being accused of something. So I just wanted to make that clear on that. Okay, so we're going to, next, we're going to get into the summary of current addition, or current conditions. So I think we hit this home in our first presentation. Deficit spending absolutely is probably one of your largest risk indicators. This particular slide only shows, you know, the last three years. So it shows how you ended in '23, '24. Yep, you were 1.7 million deficit spending. And at the end of '24, '25, you were 6.4 million deficit spending. And this year at adopted budget, you were projected to deficit spend 5.7 million. So we can see what that looks like. Now, we did go back and take a peek at '21, '22, and '22, '23. You guys were not deficit spending then, right? So something changed. Something changed that increased your deficit spending. But this is an area definitely that you need to look at, and you have to get that board-approved plan in place. Not only does the board need to adopt a plan, but then you need to implement that plan. You actually have to take that and put it into action to get rid of that deficit spending. Otherwise, that will take you down the wrong road. That is definitely one of the things that we see over and over again. So as of the adopted budget this year, even though there was not, or there was deficit spending in the current year, when we look at your out-years on your multi-year projection, you were actually projected to increase 2.6 million in '26, '27, and almost a little under 4.6 in '27, '28. That is mainly due to one little box that's on your multi-year projection, and it's called B1D. And it's one of those funny things on the SACS form. I will tell you what the district has done is they've put a number in there. They were very transparent with their number, but they put 3.5 million in '26, '27, and a million in '27, '28. We see this up and down the state. And I'm going to tell you, my boss, Mike Fine, has done a little campaign to get rid of box B1D so that districts can't use it. But we see districts doing this over and over again. So sometimes districts are going to put something in there that they, let's say that they had some one-time funds. They had some temporary employees associated with those one-time funds. They decided, they've already taken action that those employees at the end of that one-time funding is going to go away. You could put an adjustment in there that's going to account for that in your out-years, okay? The district has put those numbers in there, and then in their explanation in box F, we put it as a little point there. In box F, they identified reductions that need to happen in order to realize those savings. So they're giving a heads up in the SACS form, in the budget, okay? In, you know, am I about to have my notes? I apologize. You think so? I apologize, I had my notes down. Looks like we on a trip. Let's see if I can tell you what was said in there. Okay. Next paper. So like for '26, '27, there was an estimated attrition reduction of $1 million. That's listed in the assumptions. An estimated certificated staffing reduction of 2.5 million, and so on, an estimated. So what they're saying is that that dollar amount that's going to put you positive in that future year, we would need to make these kinds of reductions. So they're shining a light on it. But here's what we would say. Our suggestion would be that you don't use that unless the board has taken action, because you don't know that you're actually going to realize those savings. So we gave the district that feedback during interviews, right? We identified that and said, this is something that needs to change. Don't put a number in there and solve it, because you haven't solved it quite yet. Make sure that it falls out and it shows an accurate picture. So, because if you remove that 3.5 million, then that year's going to look very different, right? And that also affects future years. So we made that suggestion to the district, and we think that that needs to happen. Yep.
I'm going to add something to that.
I'm going to come over here. So a lot of districts do this. Again, because they've been in the position for a really long time, right? And they know that these are the reductions that need to take place, that, like she said, the temporary contracts and what have you. So we're fixing the problem. We know that there's discussions that are going to happen. But it's also, because now we're going to certify positive, right? So first and second interim budgets, you have a positive qualified or negative certification. And so it's in there, it's very blatant, very transparent that this reduction is going to happen. And so now we have a positive certification. So in our conversations with the district is that, again, recommending not putting in the dollar amounts there and let it fall to the bottom so that you see what your deficit's spending and self-qualify. So there is nothing wrong with the district submitting a qualified budget. A lot of districts do not want that. But you are recognizing as a district that we have a structural deficit and it needs to be addressed. And so, again, we as business people, we want to fix the problem. We know that these temporary funds are going to go away, and so we know that we're going to fix it. And so we put the numbers in there, but we're not driving the conversations necessarily that way. And so, again, it's a different thought process because a lot of districts always want to certify positive because it's a negative connotation to be qualified. But that's not the case. Self-qualifying shows that you guys realize that there is a structural deficit and that conversations are going to start happening. So I would encourage that.
And I'll just add on to that. The one thing you don't want to do is to not recognize that problem and then have the county office downgrade you. That definitely, you know, that, I will say, is one of the greatest risks too, if a district is not recognizing where you are. And so you don't ever want to get into the position where your county office then is required to downgrade you because they see things differently than you do. So we would just encourage you to do that. All right. Did we already do this one? I lost track of where we were. Okay, next up is collective bargaining. Collective bargaining, yes, was one of the highest areas of risk. You know, we didn't see disclosure documents being prepared for agreements outside of the normal represented group. So when you guys would settle with one of your bargaining units, we saw the AB 1200 disclosures. But we saw many MOUs and things that had a fiscal impact. So, you know, one that comes to mind is, and I think we may have referenced it somewhere in the report, is, you know, there was one MOU that took some classified staff and totally redid ranges. That definitely had a fiscal impact on the district. So, you know, we just encourage the district, anytime that you have a MOU or a tentative agreement, anything, to go ahead and create the AB 1200 disclosure so that you can make sure that you can afford it, right? It discloses that information. I apologize for hitting that. And the ones, and one more thing that really kind of increased your risk in this particular area is that the disclosure documents that we did review often cited your unreserved general fund in excess of the reserves. So basically, it meant that you were using your reserves. So you were using one-time funds. That wasn't everything in there. So it also cited some other things that you were going to use. But we saw that in many of the AB 1200 disclosures as a way to pay for that salary increase. It said that you were going to be using that. So again, the one-time resources should not be used for ongoing expenditures. And so that's one thing that really bumped up your score in that particular area. And we all can acknowledge that those one-time funds really kind of muddied the waters, right? It presented districts in a much more favorable light than they actually were as you were going through many of those things. So one thing that we recognize, the board's taken action to offer an early retirement incentive. This is your second one, and within just a few years. So hopefully is going to bring you some additional savings. We don't think that, looking at the state outlook, that that is really going to offer much relief. So we really think that the solutions are going to need to be at the local level. And it's going to be about the things that we've already talked about, right? In terms of coming together, prioritizing, looking at what are your goals and your priorities for the district and being able to maintain those things, but again, reduce that deficit. All right. So in terms of next steps, we've already talked about some of these. You know, continue your efforts to address your structural deficit. We talked about the plan. Implementing the plan is one of the most important pieces too, so that you can reduce that deficit. Don't use the one-time money for ongoing expenditures. I mean, this has kind of been a recurring theme tonight. But use that FHRA to prioritize the areas. And I would start in that very front section, I think page 10 minus what we talked about, the material weaknesses. Okay, you may not be able to conquer every single no, all right? But those are the ones I would tackle first, right? Because those are the ones that we've identified as an organization that definitely increases your risk the most. And then you can make a plan for the others. But I would definitely focus on those. So that's one way, that's something that you can do. What was I going to say? I apologize, I lost my train of thought. I just want to reiterate it one more time, though. The FHRA is a great tool. You can do it yourself. You guys can, you know, you get a few months down the line. You can go ahead and plug in your answers and see if those have changed. You definitely want to try to get every single, you want to try to get enough nos into yeses that it brings you down into the low-risk range, all right? We don't see the district as going off the cliff right now. That's not, we do some of these, and we're on the phone going, oh, my gosh.
We do some of these, and we're on the phone going, oh, my gosh. We have a district up north that just went insolvent, Plumas Unified. And that happened quickly. And it was a phone call, and within probably three months, they were asking for an emergency appropriation. And so we see districts like that that are ready to go off the cliff. We really don't feel like Apple Valley is that district. No. Do you guys have some things you need to work on? Absolutely. Is it going to take the people in this room working together? Absolutely. But you got to figure out a way to get there, okay? Otherwise, your kids are going to lose out. I do want to go back to questions. Do you have your questions? Okay. Hand me yours. No, that's okay. All right. So we had, in the previous presentation, before I get to any additional questions here, in the previous presentation, I just want to make sure we answered all the questions. We left some of them out, because we thought that this answered it. But I'm just going to ask them one more time and make sure that you're comfortable with what we presented. So, under risk level set assessment, how does FICMAT rate current risk level? I think we talked about that. So I think you're probably good there. Yes. If the ratings monitor are high, what steps? Steps would be taking a look at the nos, right? Especially the material weaknesses, and see if you can get those to yeses. Definitely. Did I answer everything? I think I did. I'm going back through them. Recommend. I think we did. Did you have any others outstanding that I did not answer between our last presentation and this one? I apologize.
The only one that you didn't answer, and you explained why, was the staffing.
Okay, there you go. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we'd hit all of them. There is one of yours that we couldn't get to a, a number, but we're going to get with you, and we're going to answer that question for you, okay? And we'll do that individually. All right. Any questions? And anybody has?
I'll start with a question.
Okay.
Appreciate the, first off, appreciate the time and effort you guys put into this. So on page 11, summary of current conditions, deficit spending is increasing.
Yes.
I, I heard, is there any other districts, do they set, is there some way, do they set policy stating that they will not ever deficit spend? A board, a board sets a policy, you know, such as we have a 5% rule for reserves, which is 3. But would that be something that you've seen in the past? I mean?
I personally have not. Have you seen any?
Yes.
Set a policy that they're not deficit spending? I haven't seen that.
Okay.
I, I've never seen a district do that. I think you have so many variables that I think sometimes there can be unplanned deficit spending, but...
That's right. The question would be, yeah, there's always something that's going to come up.
There, there can be. You want to do your best to avoid that, right? Absolutely. Just like with a personal finance at home, you do your best to avoid it. But there can be something that comes up, and you could have all your ducks in a row, and something can come up. But yes, you want to plan for no deficit spending. That should be the plan.
Okay. So, and also, you wrote, there is no board-approved plan to reduce and/or eliminate deficit spending. So if your recommendations, if this board wants to move forward with putting a plan together to reduce that, would you start with like a budget workshop, where it's just strictly, we're going to just hammer down on this, this issue? And is that, that would be the way to begin it?
I, I think, you know, what we talked about before, in terms of like a budget advisory committee, it has to be coming together. There has to be a...
There has to be some stakeholders involved.
Stakeholders, yeah. Educational partners across the board. There has to be a level of understanding first, though. So you're going to have to lay a foundation, that people in the room have a basic understanding, which means you're going to have to educate them and walk them through, and, and so that everybody has an understanding of what that means, what those numbers mean. And then start the process of trying to prioritize things within the district, things that you definitely want to keep, things that they may recommend, that you're going to make cuts to programs, or to staffing, or things like that. And they would come forward with recommendations to the board.
Yeah, I think you covered that earlier, that that would be the way to go forward.
Yeah, I think that that's...
Like, there's no sacred towels allowed.
I know. I'm sorry about that line.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any, are there board members? Questions?
Yeah, I do. I have a question.
Oh, Maria? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Of course, my question always comes from the packet that you sent to us. So I'm not going to deal with the packet, because I think we are going to have to visit the packet differently. And all of us will have the opportunity to look at all of the lines that you brought up in your packet, the packet that we...
Are you talking about the SACS document packet?
Yeah, the document you sent us. But what I'm looking at is, do we as a board, do we as a board need to, oh, yeah, made a copy. I don't have paper. Do we as a board need to have an approved calendar to be able to have, know exactly when each of these items must occur?
It is. That's one of the things that we did have in there. We didn't necessarily highlight it. But yes, we would, we would expect every district to have a budget calendar, as well as a governance calendar, right? So you, as a board, should have a governance calendar of what you're covering when. For the budget cycle, there should be a calendar so that all, all the, the people involved, you are going to need attendance. You are going to need to talk to food service, to talk to transportation, to see if there's any specific needs that they can identify that needs to be built into the budget. So, so you can have, so it talks about, it'll put things on the calendar in terms of conversations, in terms of when things are due, so that everyone that is involved and has to offer pieces to the district of information that they would use to build that budget on, everybody's aware of that. So yeah, that's one of the things.
Shaleen, one of the things you shared with us in the exit interview was position control.
Yes.
We do position control on a regular basis, but we don't have a calendar to, as an event in the district. And so we're working through that as a topic of, it doesn't matter who's sitting in that role. This is our calendar. This is when we do it, and everybody understands that that's how it operates.
And that's exactly why you have a calendar, because it can be in somebody's brain. And we do that as organizations way too often, that one person has all the information. They're doing it. They're doing those things. They know when those things are due. But if that person happens to get, you know, hit by a bus, or they don't come back tomorrow, I'm not going to say that. I apologize. I didn't mean that. But if they don't, if they don't show up for work tomorrow, what, in what position would you be in? You'd be scrambling. We never want districts to have to scramble. We want people to know. We have that in our organization. I'm going to say, we're addressing that as an organization, that things land in certain people's seats that they own, and then we don't cross-train, and we don't do those things. It needs to happen. Yeah.
Thank you.
I do have questions, but I'm just waiting for anybody else who has a question. Okay. No? Okay. Coming back to the budget, I noticed that in our budget development and adoption, you didn't have a lot of concerns. So I'm wondering if there are no concerns noted, and I know you mentioned that if there are things that can happen that are out of the ordinary. But it seems like it's consistently significantly off. What are the questions that we need to ask to find out why?
So, so can I just ask, when you say it's consistently off, what are you talking about? In between what? What's consistently off? Can you clarify that for me?
So, our projected budget, and I look at budgets of other school districts, too, and they don't have the huge discrepancy. And I'm speaking as a member of, of the board, as we're looking at a budget and projecting our spending for the year, and understanding what we have coming in, and what we can anticipate going out, we're making decisions from that place of knowing. And so being off by $20 million is significant. You know, we could be not spending when maybe we did have the money. And so that's my, that's my question. What are the, what are, if, if nothing is a concern as far as how we're building our budget, being off by this much, how can we correct that? Because I think it's important for us to be informed.
And I would agree with you. And, and I think that as board members, one of the things that, that you need to, to do as well, is to, to listen to the same information that, that the district is listening to. So if the district is going to, let's say, School Services' January Governor's Budget, and they go back and they do the May revise, and, and I think they're moving to possibly a virtual format in the future. I know they did it during COVID, and then they went back to in-person. I would say, do you have to attend that conference? Maybe, maybe not. If you can't go, get your hands on the materials. Because they're going through the information that is important for school districts to know, board members to know. So you're looking at that. So then when the district brings forward the adopted budget, you're looking at the assumptions. You're saying, okay, is this matching what's on their DART board, right? What are the things that are happening? So it, again, it comes back to, what are the assumptions that that budget is built on? Are they reasonable? And so I'd be asking for that information. Do you have anything to add to that?
I, I think I've kind of already talked about it, in that the budget's always changing. And the minute we print it, okay, so we give you, I say we, the district brings you first interim December 15th, and then the governor's budget comes out January 20th, right? And so everything we just put in, the assumptions, it could be different. And so there's big changes, big variances, what have you. The poll is could change, so it's impacting your multi-year. I think, in this situation, honestly, it's just going to be building that trust, and building that communication, and the transparency in the reports. I don't know how the other district made their so perfect. If you're, if you're comparing their estimated with their unaudited, then, then they really do a really good job of, I'm going to say, cleaning up the dollars probably from the sites, and managing some of their books and supplies and services and what have you. Again, I'm focusing on more of the unrestricted. So the restricted dollars, the variances over there, I'm not saying they're not important, but there's a lot of reasons for it. There's a lot to understand, which I think the budget advisory will be helpful, in understanding how federal dollars work, and how those expenditures and that dollar's accounted for. So again, federal dollars, we think we're getting them all, and we think we're spending them all. So we have $1 million in federal dollars, and we're going to spend them all. But you only book, at the end of the year, what you spent. So if we didn't spend the $1 million, and we only spent a half, your revenues are going to be off a half million dollars. And it's because you cannot claim dollars that you have not spent with the feds. Again, there's various programs that are like that. It's a whole in-depth thing. I won't go into all of that. But it can cause variances in your revenues, for example, in where the feds, federal revenue is tracked. You make a plan to spend it all, and sometimes it just doesn't happen. So I would focus more on the variances and the unrestricted, and maybe just kind of ask what's going on in the restricted. And again, staff's going to be able to tell you. So I just think, because the, the questions, right, they kind of are focused around that same thing. What's the discrepancies? Why are there big swings? What's, why, if we're budgeting this, why did we only do this? I, I really think that's just, again, kind of building the relationships and the collaboration and transparency of those reports, and working together.
And one more thing I would suggest, too, we didn't mention this to the district before in our exit interview, but I'm assuming you're probably a client of School Services' on the fiscal report, maybe? I would forward those to your board members, because a lot of times, they will do a fiscal report on things that are coming out, or changes that need to be known for districts. That's why they're sending out that fiscal report. I would, I would forward those on to your board members, so that they get that same information, because it's just some really good information about things that change throughout the year, too. A lot of times, they will highlight those changes. Yeah.
Thank you. I do attend all the budget workshops. I'm very active with being informed on the state of our, our finances from the federal and the, and our state. So I will look to continue to ask questions and make sure that we're making reasonable predictions. Thank you for that. I do have a question on your budget monitoring and updates. So when these changes happen throughout the year, and I know you talked about, that's a sign of a healthy budget. It, it's, it's going to reflect changes. It's going to be revisited. But when these changes are made, and when I'm talking significant changes, it's being done without board knowledge or approval. And my concern is that if it's not being brought to our attention, and I know I brought it up at the last staff meeting, we're not aware of the most current state of what's happening with our budget, and, and therefore, it's not, we're not making informed decisions. Correct? So is that normal? Like, that boards would be making decisions without be, being updated on the budget adjustments that are being made consistently over time?
So, again, in talking with the district, and I think with some of the communication that's happening at these meetings, and with the FHRA, right, I think there are some changes that can be implemented, that can make the budget process and the revisions more transparent. We've talked with the staff of things they can do. Every county is different. And so some counties require every budget revision to go to the board. Other counties do not. They take them as with their budget cycles. So adopt the budget, first interim and second interim, they consider them their budget revisions, and that the boards approve that, and therefore, everything that's been moved around is okay, right? It's fine. But I would say, because we're in this situation, obviously, you're wanting more information. And so, again, I've already talked with staff. I'm going to give them some examples of what they can do to help bring that transparency to the board level. And so, again, kudos to the staff for asking, what can we do? And so we're just going to supply them with some samples on what maybe, what can come to the board, maybe on a monthly basis, of here's the adjustments to the budget, so that there's more transparency in it. And so I think the budget monitoring is really hard. It's, it's almost like two people are only building it, right? But it's not. Two people. At my district, it was one. One person cannot be responsible for the whole budget. It, it, that's a lot to carry on your shoulders. And so, we're not perfect. We can make mistakes. And so I always encouraged everybody to look at the budget and ask me as many questions as possible, because I can make a mistake. And so, it's got to be in a collaborative manner of working on the budget. And so, again, just working as a team, and being open, and being transparent, and trying to build in, like I said, Matt reached out to ask, what can we do? And so I think those monthly budget revisions will help. You'll see those revisions moving. You'll understand them, right? And so now you'll be able to speak to it. If somebody asks, hey, why did our salaries move, you know, increase $1 million? Oh, well, we have this, this, and this. It was talked about at this board meeting, this board meeting, and this board meeting. And so, again, it's telling the story, and being able to communicate it to all of our educational partners. So, again, I think it's coming to you at a future board meeting. Coming soon to a theater near you.
Wonderful. Thank you. My next question is from number five, Charter Schools. It seems you have no financial concern for AAE. Are, are you aware that according to the second interim report, that their budget is no longer assuming that the foundation will cover shortfalls of revenues this year? They have historically done so. So that note from the county brought some concern to my forefront of my mind. Should there be any concerns about any potential shortfall for our district, or any financial responsibility in the event of a potential shortfall?
So, so here's what I will say to that. The most important thing, when you have a charter that you've authorized, is that you're providing oversight. Because if you do not provide that oversight, then if that charter happened to fail, and had to close their doors, you would be on the hook for their financial, outstanding financial debt, right? So the most important thing is that you're providing your oversight. I will say that the documentation that the district provided to us, you've got a pretty robust oversight process. It, it's much deeper than many districts that we've been into. So, so from our perspective, the district is doing what they need to do to cover themselves in terms of that oversight. Yeah.
My next question is from number six, and it talks about our collective bargaining agreements. So we have not identified resources that will cover our proposals in the collective bargaining agreements. I think it's essential that we, as a board, are making informed decisions. This starts with having a clear understanding of our current financial state. So if we're trying to find out where we have money, or if we have money, I know you addressed assets, and them being related to reserves. Specifically, if we're looking at where the money is, then we're looking specifically at reserves. Whatever we have in reserves, that's the money we have that can go towards our collective bargaining agreement.
Yes.
My question on number eight... My question on number eight, deficit spending. That, those figures, thank you for delineating them for us. How did, how did we come to those figures? Was it an end-of-the-year comparison between overall revenues and expenditures?
Yes, so it's included in your SACS form. So do you want to try to pull up the SACS form here? We don't, but we can just show it on one of the SACS forms. What do we do? Command tab. Okay, because we're in display. We may need some, we may need some assistance because we're we're trying to switch because we do have your unaudited actuals loaded on here. And so we want to pull that form up so that we can speak specifically to that one. And I'll show you where we pulled those numbers from. Oh, you just did it. Okay. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Sorry, we're not checking.
Well, try this here. I'm going to go ahead and shrink this one. You have the UAs?
So the, one of the UAs, yes.
This one right here?
Sure. That's 24, 25? Okay. All right.
24, 25 UAs?
Yeah, can I make it bigger?
Let's delete that, close the dots on the side.
There we go. Okay, awesome. Okay. All right. So is this just on, is it just, no, this is unrestricted and restricted. All right. Only unrestricted. All right, let me get there.
Thank you.
Okay. All right there. Okay, I'm sorry. Make it bigger. So I just wanted to show you which form we're on, just so that you know where we are. So this is your 24, 25 unaudited actuals. And if you come down here, remember we talked about, I apologize, not my computer. So right here, this line E is going to tell you your net increase, decrease and fund balance. Yeah, so right here, there's your number that we use. Because remember, we're only looking at the unrestricted in terms of your deficit spending for this particular question. So there's the number that is used. Yeah, no, it's not. Four, three, eight oh one. Yeah, we rounded it. I'm sorry. So yes. So that's where we pulled the numbers from. So we're going to look at that line on each one of your unaudited actuals. Well, we did unaudited actuals for 23, 24, 24, 25, and then we looked at that same line for your 25, 26 adopted budget.
Which is right here.
Which is right here. Yes. So your adopted budget is over here on this side. There's your unrestricted.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And the next question is, we have been spending down our reserves significantly, as you've noted, because our expenditures are greater than our revenues. As I've been seeing them drop even prior to joining the board, just observing it, that was a concern for me. My question is, is the spending down of reserves, and correct me if I'm wrong, has to come with a board directive? Is that correct?
Not spending down the reserves as a board directive, but anything that's brought to the board that's approved as an expenditure and the budget gets revised, right, and the new budget comes forward, then your situation changes, right? Your net position changes. And so you know if you're approving expenditures and your net position is now deficit spending, then, yeah.
Okay, so when we go to give directive to spend on something, a good question to ask is where are we spending from? And then to look at that fund to see the money there.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, is it included already in our budget? Have we accounted for this, right? Because there are some contracts that you know that you're going to have every year, and so you budget for them. And so as the contract comes forward, I think it usually has a funding source on the board agenda item, and so it'll tell you where it's being funded from. Is this in addition to our current budget? Or is it already included in our budget, would be a question? So then you know how it's going to affect.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And I do have a question. I mean, as you note in your time here, and I appreciate both of you and all the work you've poured into this. But there is some very real concerns that are being expressed, that are being brought forward as part of the discussion. As a board, I think we definitely want to address what you guys have talked about, and that is something you've noted, the distrust, the uncertainty about our financial state. I know also you discussed, as we were going through this, that things we were asking for were maybe more of a detailed, require more of a detailed audit. If we choose as a board and administration to move forward in that direction, to try to provide more data and as part of the process of trying to re-instill trust, is there something you would recommend, maybe something FICMAT offers or something else that you are aware of?
So go into the details as far as?
Looking at more of the history of our spending or being able to look at the projection of spending, like getting a more detailed.
I'm going to tell you that your history is going to be skewed, though. So remember those one-time dollars significantly skewed your history, all right? So what used to be in COVID years and the years immediately following looked different than it does today. So I would caution you on looking back because that is going to be skewed. So, you know.
So I think what I'm hearing is you're wanting more details than just the 194 pages, correct?
Well, like, I think because the fiscal health risk analysis was more of a, from what I understand, more of an overview.
It's a 30,000.
Correct. And so, and so in order to provide some sort of assurance or clarification, like being able to do that.
If we come in and do kind of like a forensic audit type thing?
Is that what that would be?
Yeah.
Because I don't think you guys do forensic audits.
We don't do forensic audits. No, we don't.
Yeah.
So I'm not quite understanding it, so say it for me one more time.
So what would be, is there anything that FICMAT offers that would be a little more detailed? Give a little more detailed.
The, in terms of probably the closest thing that we could offer would be an independent NYPD, independent multi-year projection. But here's what we do in those situations. We come in, we again ask the district to upload documents. We already have a lot in our document repository, so would possibly use some of those and then add some additional ones. But we would come in and talk to the district about what assumptions did you use to build your budget? There's always a timing issue because we want to get the most accurate information as we can. So at this point in the year, we would possibly do first interim, right? Because we're not going to do it off adopted budget. Lots has happened since then. So, but possibly first interim, which takes place, that should be reported out by December 15th. So we could come in, but we would talk to the district about what assumptions did you use to build your budget? What's in there? We use the assumptions that make sense to us. We don't use the ones that make sense, and we may change something based on the knowledge that we have and the information that we have. And then we basically do an analysis and say, here's your budget. Here's what we would have done if we were sitting in the seat, and we explain the differences. So is that what you're asking for? That's probably the closest thing in terms of the kind of work that we do.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that does give me some information. Thank you. I appreciate it. And then I was curious, because I know back when we started working with you, there was a possibility that you guys might be able to return in six months to see how we're moving along and following your recommendations. Is that something you're able to do?
Yeah, there's a portion in our study agreement that we already have in place with you that does allow us, if the district reaches out within a certain period of time, and I believe, Matt, I'm just going to say Matt. Don't know that I can say your last name correctly. But anyways, but Matt's already come to us and asked if that is something that we do and what's the process for doing that. So the request has to happen within a certain period of time because we want to give you an opportunity to put the recommendations into place, right? So every place that we put a no, we gave a brief little narrative as to why it's a no, right? We need a correction. So anyways, but we want to give you time to work on those. That's not going to happen overnight. So I think, if I'm remembering correctly, I want to say that you request within six to eight months, and then we come back within a 12 to 18 months to do a follow-up review, actually free of charge. Now, that one is different than this one in the sense that we come back and we look at your progress. So we would be looking for each area that's a no. We're not going to look at the ones that are a yes. We're going to assume that those stayed the same. So we look at the ones that are no, and we ask the district to provide evidence to us that would make that a yes. If the district can provide evidence, and it's really, it's kind of reviewing things at home, and then we usually have to just come and do like one day of interviews to clear up anything that can't be seen in the documents, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you so much.
May I ask just one question with regard to that? It'll be fast. When you would do that follow-up, could that change our score? So instead of being like high-risk, we could be like really good?
So what we, hey. Yeah, and I don't, I think I forgot to say that even the highest performing, most efficient functioning district there is, is not going to score a zero on FHRA because everybody has an area that they can improve in. So I'm going to tell you this. It's a great question. We actually haven't done a follow-up on an FHRA. We just haven't. We've never been invited back to do that. So we would have to determine as an organization how we approach that. But in my mind, what makes sense is that we would, we would comment on each one of those no's. I don't think we would redo the tool because we didn't verify that the yeses are still a yes. But what we could do, the district could take it, and they could take those because we will report out what has changed. And maybe we'll do a little paragraph that says, if we put these responses in and assumed all the other yeses stayed yes, here would be your new risk score. I could see us doing that. Is that fair?
That's fair. Thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you so much. We'll just move on if there's any comments that I'm going to start by thanking you. Does anybody else have anything, other board members, any comments they'd like to make? Anita?
Ms. Riley, is this our comments, our board comments?
Oh, yeah, we can. I was just, I didn't know if we wanted to dismiss them.
Okay, yeah.
You guys want to stay? Okay. Go ahead. You're up, Minia.
Okay, these are just my board comments.
Yeah.
I really want to thank the FICMAT team. Both of you are amazing, and thank you for coming all the way here to share your presentation and recommendations and answer our questions. It really is helpful, and I can't thank you enough. I also want to say thank you to our staff, cabinet, board members for taking the time to meet with the team. And I know that we all appreciate having the information that we need to help guide our district and ensure that Apple Valley remains fiscally stable. As a board member, I represent one-fifth of our board. My individual strength lies in working collaboratively with my fellow board members to make the best decisions for our district. And while it has taken some time to reach this point and review the results from the FICMAT team, I am optimistic that we as a board now have information that we need to make the informed decisions and provide leadership and direction that our district deserves. I have visited every site in the district and have witnessed exemplary teaching, support and care for our students. We are fortunate to have individuals who consistently go above and beyond for our students and families. Our district serves our students and community well. And now we must make thoughtful and difficult decisions guided by the facts presented in this report to continue to provide exemplary leadership that benefits our students, staff and community. As a history teacher, I'll admit that math and numbers may not be my strongest area. But as history teaches us, we must learn from the past in order to move forward. We must study this report carefully and use its guidance to strengthen and secure our district for the benefit of all our stakeholders. Finally, sitting where I do during our meetings, I often notice the detailed notes and documents that Ms. Longshore brings with her. I can't help but appreciate the meticulous calculations, questions and annotations that she prepares for each and every meeting, clearly the result of hours of dedication. She consistently asks the tough questions that help us serve our student, staff and district and community better. And I'd like to take a moment to thank her for her hard work and commitment. Thank you, Ms. Longshore. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Renee?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Tucker. That's very kind. I am just going to take a few minutes because I think it's important as we consider moving forward as a district that I share with you some things that have been in my head and on my heart in regards to our district's finances. It is the board member's job to provide strategic oversight, ensuring legal and ethical compliance and managing financial health. CSBA directs us to establish effective and efficient structure, support and ensure accountability. This begins with becoming fully versed in our budget. Thank you to the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team, Shailene Hart, Jennifer Noga and John Lotes for all the hours you spent reviewing data and meeting with staff and administration and the board. Your feedback on our fiscal health is invaluable. In preparation for today, I thought back to when we first discussed this as a board and when Trustee Tucker requested it be added to the agenda as an action item. I am grateful Trustee Tucker did not need a consensus of the board to accomplish that. Requests I've made have not been given the same consideration. In fact, according to our governance handbook, quote, "Any member of the governance team, employee or citizen, has the right to place items on the agenda." Our board processes must be clear. If you've watched our board meetings, you'll know. I ask questions. You'll have to forgive my tenacity. Any answer given needs to make sense, or I request data to back it. If we are told that we don't have money, but all known facts to me suggest we should, I look into it. We as a board need to be accurately informed to make decisions in the best interest of our students, our district and our community. It is unfortunate that I have not been given permission by the board to get information and have had to resort to public records requests in pursuit of clear understanding. Even then, the administrative responses have been vague and lacking, often not addressing the very question I asked. It is a gross estimate to claim that what I've asked for has to take five hours to compile, stopping people from their regular duties, when in fact, they really are just basic, simple facts that should be already known and answered easily. For example, I requested the total of ESER funds the district received from the state. Instead of a number, the board received a multi-page document. When I asked again directly for a sum, I was ignored. Our district's administration authorized the hiring of staff with temporary ESER funds, despite the state's direction and instruction not to do so. When the funds ran out, they rolled the cost over into general fund. This was at a cost of $15.3 million a year, as noted by the 24, 25 first interim financial report. This was an administrative decision. I'm often told that my actions or comments are violating the Brown Act. This is an arbitrary phrase applied incorrectly and inconsistently when the admin or board is trying to avoid transparency. It is easy to find the Brown Act. I've read it thoroughly, and I have an extra copy if anyone is interested. It's very clear on what is covered. It's not meant to keep things secret. Meetings are supposed to be open and transparent. That's what the Brown Act. That's what the Brown Act protects. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge that roadblocks to gain information are being thrown in our way as we strive to take a more active role in decision-making, instead of quickly approving things without more background knowledge. The ability we have as representatives of the community to facilitate conversations and access information is imperative, and our response to it all, essential. Acknowledging a problem and considering data are only the first steps of moving forward in health as a district. It has been the board's understanding this past year that we needed to buckle down. The decisions we have made recently have been in light of this. We've stopped all progress on the Grant Hills High School stadium, have offered early retirement for the second time in five years, lifted reading specialist positions when almost half of our students are performing 63 points below standard in ELA, allowed a $3 million reduction in books and supplies, administration took out a COPS loan, and we granted approval to move forward with a trans loan if needed. Our decisions, in response to what we were told, had a very real effect on our students. Our teachers paid on average $4,000 to $16,000 less per year than their counterparts in neighboring districts have expressed concern. That's a district savings of at least $3 million a year. How are we not in a better financial position? And how can we attract and retain the best? Lack of fair compensation has caused staff to look elsewhere. We've incentivized retirement for roughly 48 certificated employees, and our district hired 59 new teachers this year, many working under emergency circumstances towards their credential. This rate of turnover and filling of positions creates instability at our school sites. We need to talk about this because our decisions affect kids. We need to be properly informed. We need to provide clear direction. We need to do better. I shared with you all my intentions of serving in truth and transparency, but our district currently fosters a climate of favor and fear. I've experienced both. When I joined this board in December 2024, I was offered fully-covered insurance for myself, my spouse, and any eligible children. When I started asking questions, that offer was rescinded, citing Government Code 53208.5, quote, "Health and welfare benefits for board members shall be no greater than that received by the district's non-safety employees." Despite this knowledge, four board members received fully-covered health insurance until Trustee Tucker and I joined the board, and two continued to receive 100% benefits until it was brought to their attention this past May. Why did our administration do this? Why are there favorites? Why aren't our employees receiving the least compensation, at least getting the same health and welfare benefits? Now we, as a board, have decisions to make in response to this information presented. My hope is that we can reflect on all that's been shared and see it as a foundation upon which we can build and strengthen AUSD one decision at a time so that we can think outside of ourselves or anybody else we feel in allegiance to in order to best support the students, district, and community of Apple Valley.
Maria?
Well, I, I don't have a prepared speech, but anybody that knows me knows I don't do prepared speeches. I have to start by saying thank you to you ladies for taking the time to come back up here and to share with us about the health of our district. When we sit on the board, we assume that the people who are leaders or people who are managing our district, who are highly qualified, know that, what they're doing. It is, I've never chosen to go in and rebuild the budget. That is not my position as, as a trustee, but it is my position to know how the budget works. So I thank you so much for opening this wound, and we are going to definitely have some growing pains. I can guarantee each one of you that much, that there will be hard questions asked and there better be good answers given. And if there's no good answer, there will be no good vote coming from me. That is very important. When I joined Apple Valley School District in 1985, in 1985, 40 years ago, Apple Valley, I was making $23,000 as a teacher. I was satisfied making $23,000 as a teacher and raising five children out of that $23,000. My experience is different because the budget and the money went a long way then. I raised my children during the time of coupon shopping, and I became a queen going coupon shopping, too. I can feed my five children. When I joined Apple Valley School District, we were just getting ready to leave Victor School District. And so we picketed at that time. And I recall coming in to speak to the board to let them know that I'm, we shop at the same store, but some people are making more money so they can shop better at the same store. So I would go to the clearance rack so I can cover my children, or go to the Goodwill store to buy clothes and then spend the whole night washing it so that they'll have clean clothes to go to school. That's my history. But I went on to be a teacher in Apple Valley, enjoying every minute of it. I enjoyed it not because of just the children, but because of the family I inherited, every one of you in this room. So you became my family. But when I became an administrator, I earned the right, and I chose to use the word earning the right. I earned the right to have full medical coverage upon retirement because I had invested the years of being, having that position. So I, I, I wasn't aware that there's a new rule that came about because my right was still intact. It was my, part of my retirement. It was all written in my retirement packet, and I wasn't about to give it up because I had, I had earned that right. And I'm, I don't know about earning a right for most people, but for me, because I had been a teacher, I had done all of the things that the district wanted of me, and I had served without blemish in the district. And when I retired, I was good for them to cover me until I reached the age of 70. I just recently reached that age of 70, by the way. And so when the district decided to give me a retirement or the medical coverage, I didn't ask any questions because I knew that was part of my packet. I didn't ask too many questions. But later on, I found out that I didn't have to, I couldn't pay for it. So for, for the benefit of having transparency, when we joined CalPERS, when we became CalPERS as a district, I was informed that CalPERS said they couldn't cover me the way they had covered me all along. And I made a decision that I was still going to continue to be covered. So from July 1 to November 1 of this year, guess what my paycheck was? 93 cents. And do you hear me complain? No. But I get really irritated when I hear information that certain board members got favors. I did not get a favor. I earned every bit of what I got. So I have to make sure that that is on record, that no, I did not get a favor. I earned it. And now let's go on to FICMAT. I am so happy that we have this information. And happy in the sense that I recall several board meetings ago, I said I was going to reserve my comment until we got the FICMAT return, report. Because there's no point chasing after something you don't know. Now we know. And now that we know, I can guarantee you that every line item that you marked a no will be addressed by this board, or at least by me, until we get answers. I do not believe that the district is hiding something, but I do believe that the district was not even aware that these questions were going to come up. And there's been a lot of juggling of information. The only portion of this information that I am really satisfied about is the fact that the bargaining unit president brought additional information to give you some clarity, and I hope you have that clarity added into your document. But as far as I am concerned, it is definitely not my position to recreate the district's budget, not my position. It is my position to ask questions, and I guarantee you there will be questions. My question will begin by asking the county, how did you approve us each year to be deficit? Why did you continue to say we are good every year and we're not? So that would be my very first question. And after that, I want to be sure that we take care of the people who are in front of the children. I was in front of the children for almost 27, 25 years in this district. So I want to be sure that those people who are directly in front of the children are taken care of. And that will involve a lot of growing pains. There will be positions that we'll have to eliminate so that we can afford to pay the teachers. That's all I ask, and that's where I sit, starting today. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Maria. Since you're going on record, I will add, I elected not to take my benefits because I get them from my employer, so I was not one either. I just wanted to say thank you for coming, but especially thank you for offering the additional support with the technical work because it's been clear that we do have members that needed that extra support and they had questions. So I just wanted to say thank you for taking that extra time to clear that up for them, but then also share it with us. So, thank you.
Again, ladies, thanks. It was very informative, especially for, for me, and hopefully we'll see you guys back, maybe it was March, is that six months, April, March, April?
School request.
Okay, well, that's what I said, maybe, maybe, okay. Renee?
Yeah, I, I too appreciate Ms. Noga and Ms. Hart in providing today's fiscal health risk analysis. I also appreciate the teams in HR and the business office who gathered all those documents because I know that it was a heavy lift as school was starting. Each of the departments deserve such expert feedback. I wish there were such things for each department within a school district because, as we've talked about it, you don't know what you don't know, you inherit what you inherit, and you move forward and try to improve on what you learn from what you, you get from previous people. So I guess I just want to go on record that I appreciate that the board approved the recommendation to bring FICMAT in. We had been talking ongoing for months about who to bring in, and we had brought school services in in the past, but having that support was wonderful. And I do look forward to a year from now, and it is a year because I read the contract again. It is a year from now, anywhere between this, the year and 18 months to provide us a review, and we're excited to show some changes and improvement. So, thank you.
Okay, well, that brings us to close, closing items. What time is it here?
We still have like five hours.
Oh, well, no, we don't. So that's next Thursday. Next regular board meeting is Thursday, November 6, 2025, at approximately 5:00 PM, Educational Support Center. Anybody have any future items for any agenda items coming up? I mean, the meeting is next, next week, we do have a full packet. Okay, hearing none. We are going to adjourn, so we will need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Did you get that, Cuddy?
Second.
I think it was Anita. All right, we'll do a roll call. Anita?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
I vote aye, too. All right, guys, see you next Thursday. Thank you so much.[1777.76]